Welcome to today's formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. We will now call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilmember Garcia. Councilman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. We have an interpreter here with us today to provide Spanish translation. Mario, would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. My name is Mario Barajas. I will be serving as this afternoon's interpreter, Spanish interpreter, and I will be making a brief announcement in Spanish. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Mario Barajas. Yo voy a estar sirviendo como el intérprete de español esta tarde. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G67186742 through 6748, S46928 and 46952 through 46989, and resolutions 21865 through 21869.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on mayor and city council board and commissions nominations?
Yes, I have a motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
All those in favor, please signal by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes.
Eight to one.
Passes. I don't think we have full eight.
Oh.
Okay. Passes with Councilman DeCiccio dissenting. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion related to the order of the meeting?
Yes, I have make a motion to suspend the rules and take item 15 out of order.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We then move to item 15, which is our phased city reopenings plan. I will turn to our assistant city manager Milton Dehony to introduce the item.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. We will walk through a few slides relative to item number 15. So the first slide that you're looking at is showing the departments or facilities that are either closed in terms of their operation or have been conducting partially reduced operations during the course of the pandemic. As we have worked through the pandemic, we've had a number of resources that we've used in order to provide information for us to influence our decision-making. This slide shows you what some of those sources are, including specific industry guidelines, national guidelines, and also we have a group of public health consultants that have been advising us. The conversation today regarding item 15 focuses on our general approach to reopening. We have chosen to divide that into two categories: Phase 2A, which focuses on outdoor-related activities, and Phase 2B, which focuses on indoor activities. One of the resources that we follow, one of the metrics that we follow daily to provide information on the current state of community spread is this dashboard that's on the screen. This comes from the Arizona Department of Health Services. On the date that we had to cut off in order to make the packet, it was showing that the percent of positivity in our community was at 3.9%. And the percent of COVID-like illness was at 2%. That is in the green area or minimal community spread. This benchmark shows us cases, percent positivity, and COVID-like illness. And we review it every single week to see where we are. Over the bulk of the summer, we were operating in the substantial community spread category. So clearly, we have seen some improvement in recent weeks. In terms of the number of cases at this reading, there was just under 30 people, 30 cases per 100,000 that were positive within the community. This gives a better visual of what our situation has been. It approximates a bell-shaped curve. And so I would direct your attention to the right side of the slide. And what it shows is in recent weeks, we have clearly been experiencing reduced number of cases, positivity, and COVID-like illness. This is an additional dashboard that we look at. This is Phoenix-specific, and it relates to some of the numbers, the 29.26 cases per 100,000 that I cited a little earlier. So we use this information to let us know how we're doing and to help us determine what we should do next. So Phase 2A that is before you today focuses on outdoor activities associated with parks and recreation. The items on this slide have already gone in front of the Parks and Rec Board, and they have unanimously recommended approving the reopening or resumption of these activities. If council elects to support this item today, we would be able to start opening these things up almost immediately. So we are requesting permission to reopen Phase 2A parks, outdoor facilities, combined with the Parks Board recommendation. Phase 2B is indoors, and this slide shows you the departments that have some set of activities that would be part of the Phase 2 reopening. While these activities are not the same for everyone because the departments do different things, they each involve letting people back into their facilities at some level. One of the options that we are bringing forward is to continue to follow the dashboard data. And if it improves or stays the same over the next couple of weeks, we would then be prepared to ask you to consider Phase 2B options. So we would bring back information to you on October 21st for your review. So the recommendation is Phase 2A reopen parks and outdoor facilities, and Phase 2B return to council with data in two weeks. We have on the line with us today one of our public health consultants, Dr. Saskia Popescu, who has been working with us along with her colleagues over the last several weeks. And I would like to introduce her to you, ask her to make just a few comments, and then she would be available for questions from the mayor and members of council. That concludes my report. Dr. Popescu, good afternoon.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. I just wanted to reiterate these comments in terms of making sure if we do move into the next phase that we're really following the data because it is somewhat delayed. And really what we've been doing right now is reviewing individual department plans to advise on various aspects, but really digging into the recommendations for both cleaning and disinfection, PPE, and a various plethora of things that go into COVID response and prevention. But ultimately, I encourage, as we look at these plans, we also, you know, this is the de-escalation, if you will, the relaxation of restrictions. And part of public health is also knowing when to scale back up. So I encourage the council and to really evaluate what would be the next phase of this because it's a very slow incremental process, as we've learned in Arizona, to relax restrictions. And really, that's what it needs to be. But scaling back up should be a little bit faster in what our thresholds are for that. So I've been very fortunate to work with Milton and his team to evaluate several of these plans and to really hone in on where we can improve. But overall, so much of the work has been really focused on reducing public gatherings, focusing on cleaning disinfection, and mask mandates on top of distancing. So I'm happy to answer any questions in the meantime. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Milton, and thank you, doctor, for lending your considerable expertise to us. We are certainly lucky that you are willing to consult with us, and we have certainly given you a diversity of issues on which to consult, I understand, including a haunted house, which you probably did not see as being part of public health. But we are trying to make smart data decisions with all events and our city reopening phase. So appreciate you helping us make data-driven, smart decisions. Will you talk a little bit about triggers and timing for phased opening? And obviously, this week in the news, one community in New York did a reverse. So how can you give us your advice on that?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's important to note when we talk about New York, they opted to do a targeted approach, meaning they did not close a widespread area. They focused on the ZIP codes that were directly impacted. And that might be something we could consider, actually. I mean, I would defer to you and to ADHS and Maricopa County on that. But ultimately, there are targeted methods when it comes to that maybe we should slow down or escalate back-up control measures. I think one piece to consider is, of course, we don't want to just focus on one day of bad data. But if we, and, you know, I have been concerned over the past couple of days. I mean, we're maintaining, and then we have little blips, which is concerning. But I stress that we don't just think one week, you know, is not that bad. This is, a lot of this data is delayed. Honestly, some of the triggers we use, including percent positivity, it's a helpful indicator, but it's really an indicator of how much testing we're doing. Something like hospitalization is very delayed. Deaths are very delayed. So when we look at the data as a whole, remember, if we're seeing consistently a week or two, that's really starting to show an increase, it's actually much worse in the public. And I think that would be truly, you know, and I don't want to give you a hard rule, but something that I would stress again saying, well, we need to have four weeks' worth of increasing data, increasing case counts, or, you know, percent positivity is climbing. And, you know, it's, I would say, make it a much shorter threshold, and it's better to err on the side of caution and implement some of those incremental control measures than really trying to delay those because that's when things happen. Because all of this data is truly delayed, we know that it gets, you know, dumped in a data warehouse, and then it has to kind of go into all of the graphs. I mean, what I saw for some of the percent positivity was that September 23rd was the last date. So these are things that we should consider. So I would highly encourage, as we're talking about relaxing restrictions, to consider a threshold, maybe if we're seeing two weeks of incremental case counts and hospitalizations and percent positivity, that should be the conversation that we start having about, should we be holding off on further reopenings and maybe talking about pulling back on some? Because a targeted approach could be a nice, happy medium.
Wonderful, and that's very consistent with some of the conversation we've had at the city council. We have some city council districts that have had greater challenges than others, and those council members want to make sure people in their community are as safe as possible. Can you talk a little bit more about your, about different timeframes? There's some reopening plans have two-week, three-week, or open-ended timeframes?
Yeah, so, you know, I think when we're really looking at the metrics, most of the data is on a 14-day rolling period. Some of it looks at seven. So we tend to go a little bit fast when it comes to reopening. I would say, right now, we are seeing steady data with a couple of little blips. So when we are looking at, you know, we're hovering around that 5% positivity, it dipped down. But then some of the data is a little bit more concerning on the ADHS website. I'm sorry if I am somewhat pessimistic. I would say, you know, if we have those thresholds, right, we're at moderate right now, I would stress that we don't wait four weeks to move up. I would say if you are seeing growth in case counts, whether it's, you know, by, I mean, I, yeah, I would say let's, we should definitely talk with Maricopa County and ADHS on what their triggers are. But I would say use two weeks as a happy, as a happy medium. Because by four weeks, what you're actually looking at is something that could be potentially much worse. You know, I can tell you, having been on the front lines here, things were really, really bad, and you didn't see that in the data for at least a week or two. And that was a very hard thing to convey. So I encourage you to, you don't have to pull the trigger on it, but start having those conversations when you're seeing things increasing for about two weeks. I think that is a nice threshold to have personally.
Wonderful. Thank you. A good reminder that the data can trail what's actually happening in our community. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So one of my questions is, I mean, Maryville 85031 was one of the, one of the ZIP codes that was hit the hardest, and I'm not exactly sure where they're at today. But what are, what are these areas, are there still areas of the city that you would consider to be substantial and that are still in the red?
It looks like we're all mostly, honestly, in moderate transmission, which is good. I haven't seen any personally, based off of ZIP code, that are still hitting really, really red. That being said, again, this is delayed data. So based off of case counts, I'm not seeing that being a particular issue. But I think, based off of what we have seen, if there are areas we know that are particularly susceptible and more likely to see another bounce, another surge in cases, maybe we have a little bit more proactive efforts in that, you know, after you've seen a week of increasing cases. How can we be more preemptive? I'm not saying closures, but maybe more proactive health measures in that regard. Just because we know that is a very vulnerable population, and we want to kind of contain it as much as possible. I mean, that's why New York is doing that targeted effort because they know that this is a vulnerable ZIP code. This is a vulnerable few blocks. And, you know, it's better to be a little bit more cautious early on and contain that bubble than try and do a widespread closure and impact a lot of people. So right now, I haven't seen, based off of the data on ADHS's website, I haven't seen anything that really hits a red flag for me. But I think we should definitely be mindful of those ZIP codes using historical data.
So what are, what are some of the things, right, just because, you know, Maryville 85031 and 85033 were two of the ZIP codes that were consistently red? What are some measures that you think that we should be taking right now so that we don't get there again?
Testing is honestly a huge thing. And I, obviously, I think with all of this stuff going on right now in the White House, we can talk about testing a lot. It's not the only strategy. But for surveillance purposes, it's really important. So I really like to come at it from kind of this holistic approach where we do much more accessible, widespread, available testing that's free, drive-through clinics, especially for children. It's actually really hard to get your child tested for a lot of people. So making sure that we're not missing out on that patient population. Really doing a lot of targeted education and communication about actually risk awareness. One thing that we have seen are outbreaks not related to things that you would consider high-risk. But for example, you know, people, we think high-risk is like going to the grocery store and, you know, running errands. And those can be, but then people think, oh, I'm going to have a backyard barbecue. And they invite, you know, like all their friends and family over. And that ends up actually becoming a cluster or no event. So doing much more targeted communication on, hey, these are high-risk situations and environments so that people can take that and really utilize that knowledge. Because we can hit out masks, of course. We can emphasize distancing, of course. But having that critical awareness of what is actually risky and what can increase your risk for transmission, especially indoors, that's a huge piece. So I would do much more targeted education and awareness on that, honestly.
And then my last question is, I know that, you know, CDC guidelines have said that our bathrooms in our parks, especially now that we're opening up our parks, are you still recommending that we clean those bathrooms once or twice a day?
So, I mean, you're asking an infectious disease person how often to clean something. So of course, I'm going to tell you as often as you can. I personally am a big believer in twice a day or as often as feasible simply because COVID-19 is not the only infectious disease out there, and we're moving into respiratory virus season and also stomach bug season. So one, if you can manage twice a day, I highly encourage it, but bare minimum would be one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I would also add for bathrooms, reminders to wear your mask in the bathroom. That's something that I haven't seen as much, and I think that's a great, great time for people just to remember. You know, please, you got to wear it everywhere.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia, and then Councilman Nowakowski.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, and thank you, doctor. It's great to have you on here with us. I mean, I think, you know, a couple of weeks, or, I don't even know when it was, three weeks ago, a month ago, we decided to open up the sports fields. And I was struggling with it because there were still areas in my district and the vice mayor's district that were still showing up as red. And the council, we decided to move forward with opening up the fields, but that concern still remained because I know the numbers that we use are county numbers or overall numbers to be able to reopen. And so I'm not going to try to argue like last time that we shouldn't reopen. I think we know where we're at, and I know some of your areas, folks are really asking to open them up, and that's also needed. But what I want to ask of Milton, especially with the last comments that we just heard, if there's a way where with our staff, and we talked about last time how hard it would be to clean every bathroom twice or add more attention, if we're not opening in a targeted way, can we put more resources, extend more PPE, do more cleansing, and do more of that preventive work in the areas that are most impacted? Obviously, southwest Phoenix, downtown area right now, still parts of it are in the red, has to do with student population. And so if we're not opening in a targeted way, can we make sure that those most vulnerable populations can get that extra attention, those extra resources? And I guess that question's for Milton.
So Mayor, Councilmember Garcia, one of the things we can do based on the comments, since essentially we are controlling a significant portion of the testing that's going on, not all of it, but a significant portion, we can direct more testing into areas where the statistics appear to be more alarming. We have been sharing information on being proactive. One of the things a doctor mentioned today is a higher level of education about familial social gatherings. That's not really something we have pushed a lot. We certainly can push that more. In terms of the cleaning, I believe the Parks Department is prepared to administer the twice-a-day cleaning in the restrooms. And we're also planning on asking people to assist with their own cleaning, their own wipes, masks, et cetera. If the intent or there's a desire for us to be more proactive on making some of that available, we can look at the best way to do that as well. And we do have the Parks Director here in the audience if you want to ask a question of her.
I mean, I think the broad question I would ask is, do you all feel ready, capacity-wise on the staff, to, I know you mentioned earlier that you can open up today, we voted for it, but is there a little extra time that's needed, or are you all ready to go? And then also, just one thing I felt to mention earlier, a lot of schools are, not a lot, but schools are opening up at different times. But we know some school districts are coming back on the 13th, which is next Monday. And so I'm obviously have concern with that. And so also, what that question comes, and it's past, it's not just in this subject, but what partnership or what things are we doing to communicate with schools, specifically the ones that are opening up, so make sure we have testing around that area or that we're just cognizant of what's happening in the districts that are opening?
So Mayor, Councilmember Garcia, other members of council, the reference to being ready to start almost immediately, that references the outdoor activities at the parks. So if you were to say to us today you want us to move forward, we can start with that almost immediately. When we talk about the outdoor parks activity, that's a range of saying that it's okay to use picnic tables and ramadas to play volleyball, basketball, to open up the restrooms, which will probably take a couple of days to get done. We are prepared to move forward with the twice-a-day cleaning. So that is easier for us to start doing. With respect to the school systems and school districts, as you know, over the course of the summer, we made significant contributions to them. We have been communicating with them recently about additional things they may need that would qualify under the dollars that we have available. We have been tabulating a list of some of those PPE-related items. And so we would be prepared, if directed by you all, to give them additional assistance in that regard.
Councilman Nowakowski, followed by Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the doctor, if she's back on.
Happy to help.
All right. Hi, doctor, thank you so much. You know, one of the biggest concerns I have is, in the west side, this ZIP code 85009 is shared by a couple districts, and also 85033. Those seem like the two ZIP codes that are the hotspots within our city, are the highest hotspots in our city. Is there any way or any type of plan that we can come up with, city, to really try to offset that or educate those individuals in that area or even create some type of partnership with the schools? Or what's your recommendation to kind of lower that, those numbers in those ZIP code areas? My big concern is exactly what Councilmember Garcia talked about. After fall break, October 13th, kids are going back to school. And most of these kids, after school, they go to one of our rec centers or they go to our parks or after-school programs. And many of the after-school programs are closed. So the natural place for them to go is probably either home or hanging out in one of our parks. So my concern is, when you have a bunch of kids together with no parents kind of overseeing them, those masks are going to come off, and there's going to be all kinds of interaction. So how can we be a little bit more proactive? I know that we have the testing, and it's a 10-minute test. I mean, it's a great concept. We had it in a couple of locations in my district. But people are really relaxed about going to testing. Back in July, we had lines and lines of people waiting for two hours or so. Now, we can't get the people to come in to get tested. So that's some of my concerns, right? So I threw a lot of things at you. If you can kind of help us in preventing, especially in those hot zones, and what are your recommendations, right, what we can do as a city of Phoenix?
So regarding the rapid testing you were talking about, you know, rapid testing has, is a wonderful tool. It should not be used as a primary resource because it's secondary, right? It's reactive, it's not proactive. So I would encourage you to have those resources made available to schools, actually, so that if you had a child that was symptomatic or, you know, or even an educator who was, you could do rapid testing on-site to know if, obviously, we want sick people to go home. But one of the most disruptive things I've seen with schools is that a single child goes home and has a fever, and then everybody panics and wants to have the 14-day quarantine before we've even gotten a test back. That's extremely disruptive to parents, to guardians, everybody. So removing that a little bit would be quite helpful. I think accessibility to those tests have happened in some of the private schools, but a wider availability to provide that on-site would be very, very helpful to the school and to the parents. So that would be one piece I would definitely encourage. You know, when you mentioned after-school programs, I'm not going to lie, right now, if I had to choose between indoors and outdoors, I'd rather kiddos be outdoors because that means we've got natural ventilation, more space. Policing people to wear masks has been one of the greater challenges of my career, especially children. That being said, you can only control what you control. So I don't know if, I can't speak to the resources that would be available for after-school programs, but perhaps bringing them outdoors would be helpful, you know. I think that I would defer, you know, to Milton for that, but I think that's an option. Right now, indoors is going to be really tricky, and we really discourage it for that many people. So in some ways, yeah, I'd rather kids go home because at least I know they're in their households.
Right.
But, you know, I think what you said speaks to the need for a greater after-school program, perhaps that's outside. And I don't want to say monitor, but, you know, encourage. a greater after-school program, perhaps that's outside, and I don't wanna say monitored, but, you know, encouraged so that children can be, um, masked and still taking advantage of the great weather we're having right now. So in that, in those areas that are harder hit and need a little bit more attention and focused efforts, that's why I see the school testing might be a good option. Um, but y- you know, really, access to resources that make it easier to stay home, honestly. And this kind of goes outside of my, my infectious disease purview, but I can tell you one thing I, I really struggle with, um, is convincing people to stay home if they're sick or have been asked to quarantine. So I, I defer to you all for that, but I, people should be able to stay home, and that is a big challenge. Part of that is also contact tracing. I know that we have some amazing resources locally for that, but it's also a delayed effort. So we can talk about testing, but unless you get those results back very quickly, and those get to Maricopa County, and they can initiate contact tracing, there's gonna be a several-day delay. And that helps prevent secondary cases. So if you can infuse more resources into that process, and, and those particularly hotspot areas, that could help too.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, I have a follow-up question for Milton and Tracy from the parks.
Wonderful.
Uh, Milton, so just hearing what the Doctor's saying, I think one of the things that I like to see is how can we partner up with some of the schools, especially in those high, um, zip code areas like that, eight-five-zero-zero-nine and eight-five-zero-three-three? And really maybe provide the testing, maybe getting a permission slip from the parents to do the testing to the kids? And then maybe we can actually figure out if we do have a problem within the school community, and then we can probably target the family by that way. If a student's sick, maybe the parents or a brother or somebody living with them, and then we can probably come up with some way to diagnose that, and maybe try to bring down the levels. Um, is that possible, um, Milton, to do?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Noakowski, uh, it is possible for us to talk specifically with schools within a targeted area about setting up testing opportunities to serve that community. It'll require a little bit of maneuvering on our part, uh, but we do know how to do that. We can, uh, pull something together, and the, I guess, one of the uh, obstacles we've got to move past is speed. We've gotta go pretty fast in order to make this happen within the December timeframe. But if that's your, in your direction, we will certainly get working on that. Uh, we have relationships with them already, uh, and then Tim Valencia is part of our group too, so, uh, anything additional, Tracy? Yes, sir.
Uh, is Tracy there?
Mayor, Councilmember, I'm here.
All righty. Hey, Tracy, the other thing I was, I was wondering if we've partnered up with the Doctor to kind of train our staff. Are basically, I know a lot of our staff members have been on, um, have been working from home, and I've been hearing from some of them that they're afraid to come back to work because of COVID-nineteen. And I was just wondering if there's some type of extra training for those individuals that are gonna be out, out at the parks, cleaning the, um, swings off, I guess, and, and keeping an eye on things. And if we do some type of, um, after-school program, maybe in the future, if we can start maybe using some of those outdoor, um, vans that we purchased for those parks that don't have rec centers, and maybe create some type of a COVID, um, outdoor after-school program that we can really, um, take advantage of the situation and, and see maybe even we can do some testing with those children that don't have, um, that have, um, no place to go after school, and they can, um, actually get a permission slip from their parents for us to maybe test them. And so I'm not sure if your staff has been trained, or if we can come up with a plan to train them.
Mayor, Councilmember Noakowski, we do have, uh, we have implemented cleaning protocols since, uh, we've opened up our fields and the restrooms associated with those. Those do include, um, include the frequency of cleaning, the products to use, the PPE, things of that nature. And we would utilize that same cleaning protocol if the outdoor amenities were opened as well. So we do have an internal training plan, um, that we are utilizing. And then in regards to, um, outdoor programming, part of what this includes, um, of what we're requesting to reopen, is the outdoor park programs where we would go out and do programming in parks. The vans, um, will not be available until January because, uh, we purchased new ones. But we, we do intend to do outdoor park programming with social distancing, masks worn, and we could work with Milton to partner on testing opportunities with that.
And I believe that we have, um, some experts now that are, are working with us, you know, the doctors here on, on the Zoom with us. Um, how can we work with them to make sure that our staff members, because I feel that a lot of our staff are afraid to come back because they're really, they just don't know what's really going on. They watch a ten-second news clip, and it scares the heck out of you, you know? So I was wondering if there's somehow, some way that we can set up some time with some of our experts that we've hired to kind of just go over the questions that our staff may have, just to make them at ease coming back to work. Are the ones that aren't at ease, do we have a backup plan for those not to come back to work? That they can actually work from home or so?
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Noakowski, other members of council, we are in ongoing communication with the labor groups representing the employees that we have. We've been communicating with them with some regularity. It certainly is true that some people are a bit anxious about coming back, and that's part of what factors into being methodical about reopening, so that when we talk about it, we're able to identify how many people would we need and what role would we need them to play. Uh, our HR department has been communicating with employees in an ongoing way, as has the city manager, uh, with his podcast. But in terms of the, I guess, the real essence of your question, uh, we will look for additional ways to communicate what safety really means, and to share with them all the safety measures we have taken and are continuing to take. Uh, lastly, the steps that we have put in place thus far, we intend to leave in place. So the high-touch cleaning, the Plexiglas, the mask, the PPE, the guidance around food handling, discouraging potlucks, and all the things that employees have taken for granted, we will continue to push those and other things to keep our environments as safe as possible.
So basically, our employees will have access to the experts if they have any concerns or, or they, they fear coming back to work, that there's a, a panel of experts that can actually relieve them or help them with their issues that they're having, right?
Yes, sir. We can set up, uh, WebEx-type, uh, forums, for lack of a better way to put it, where we can do some Q and A sessions with employees, with our public health experts. We can arrange for that, yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Pastor, did you have a question?
Hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, I was somehow gonna end up leaving the meeting. Um, I have a question for, uh, the Doctor, and I really appreciate that, uh, we're able to have this dialogue and conversation, especially with the public, uh, listening to our concerns. Um, I agree, uh, with, uh, Councilman Noakowski regarding the schools and the schools opening because they're gonna, uh, we should be returning back to school next week, some of them, not majority, but many of them are, and some will still be able to do virtual. Um, in the COVID van, I think what we, we should do, look at and do is because we have our COVID van and we have it up, uh, schedule it up until December, is that, uh, schedule, uh, the van to go to, uh, maybe the school district and inform, uh, families that that at the school district, there is the COVID van, and if they wanted to get their students, uh, their kids tested, they would be able to get an appointment and do that. I think that's one of the solutions or ways that we could do it. Um, I know that Osborne School has asked for that and has requested that, and, um, I, it, I believe is on, on the pipeline, uh, for that, uh, schedule. So somehow we could work with the, with our schools within our area. But also knows, knowing, um, the fact that we have a COVID van, my other concern is we know that in reduction in flu cases, and, uh, any severity of any type of flu or virus can make a difference in our hospital, uh, capacity, especially in our hotspots. So I would like to, from your opinion, uh, I've been advocating to have flu shots uh, along with the COVID van, uh, so that there, those people that are in need or, uh, don't have the ability to be able to afford a flu shot, would be able then to get a flu shot in order to keep our numbers down, uh, with COVID. And I would just like an opinion, uh, or what your thoughts are. Maybe it, it's more of thoughts uh, of, of doing something like that.
Yeah, I think accessible, um, vaccination is always a good thing, and especially a roving one. But I, I would ask that, um, you also ensure they have the time to sit with people if they're unsure of egg allergies or any contra, um, health contraindications, because a lot of times, you know, if somebody hasn't had a flu shot in a while, or you know, there's various reasons that we ask them just to hang out for fifteen minutes to wait. So just that there would be a protocol for vaccine safety.
Yeah, okay. So yes, because we have a vax, uh, we have a safety, uh, I call it a safety net, but we do have a safety plan, uh, for our COVID testing, and which is also fill out forms and, and, and do the safety pieces with the nurses and the doctors that are there, uh, wait their fifteen minutes to get their test results. So it would probably, the same system would be similar, uh, for the flu. Are you allergic to egg? Are you allergic to, uh, these different types of things that are, that are in a flu shot? But I, uh, but most importantly, what I, what I'm advocating for is to be able, or preventative measures is to be able to, those that want, have the ability to get a flu shot, especially when they don't have access.
I would highly encourage you to have very clear communication that this is for the flu and not a COVID-nineteen vaccination. Um, just very, very clear distinction with that.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question, because I am a germaphobe, uh, and, um, some people think I'm crazy because I am. Uh, I had great concerns about opening up the parks, especially the bathrooms. And if the bathrooms are cleaned once a day and two hundred, or I'll even say even, I'll make it less than that. Fifty people go through the bathroom, um, and it's only cleaned once a day. Uh, I was, not I, all of us, uh, were all recommending for our bathrooms to be clean, cleaned twice a day. Uh, I happen to have been, uh, fortunate to have watched a demonstration two weeks ago, uh, regarding some new PPE equipment that is out there that, um, I can't remember what building, what industry, what, what business I was at, that they were using that what, what it did is that they would, it sprayed, uh, it sprayed the room or sprayed the bathroom.
Yeah, you're referring to electrostatic sprayers.
Okay, um, and so when I think about cleaning a bathroom, um, I, I do old-school way of, uh, uh, get my Clorox and my, uh, wipe, and my gloves on, and scrub my, my toilet and my bathroom. And so that's why I was thinking this is a more innovative way that quickly somebody could get into a bathroom and quickly, uh, go in, spray, have it in there, and it sits for a bit, and, uh, and then it's done. It's not, it doesn't take, um, I guess, more than, uh, I would say thirty minutes.
So a couple of things, um, first of all, the main mode of transmission for this virus is direct contact, right? Face-to-face, drop with small particle aerosols. We're seeing very, very limited transmission with the environment, meaning you touch something, you touch your face. So that does happen, but it's, it's much lower, um, that we're seeing in general. So the other piece is that electrostatic sprayers, they do not substitute cleaning, the manual, you know, the elbow grease cleaning. So you can't just go in there, spray it down, and it's, it's gonna be totally clean. It doesn't penetrate biofilm, it doesn't penetrate, um, dirt and grime. So those are commonly used for areas that have like a lot of stuff that you maybe can't scrub everything, like an end-of-day type cleaning. So, um, I, I wouldn't necessarily, I'm not gonna discourage you from that, but I, I want to stress that it, it would mean that you would have to go in, clean, like really scrub, and then spray it. So those are commonly used for like, if you, if you had a van, let's say, and you, you know, you wanted to clean it at the end of the day, and there's a lot of high-touch surfaces, depending on if the chemical, um, the disinfectant is going to cause any issues and breakdown with materials. I have seen those sprayers or foggers even used in those situations because it's, it's gonna be a lot of time-consuming, you know, to try and scrub everything. So they try to get all the high-touch surfaces and then spray that for that tiny corner that you might not even realize exists. Um, I, I don't honestly see a lot of, um, utility because it would still take a person physically going there, spraying it all down. You'd have to close the bathroom for that period of time because you don't want anybody coming in there, it needs to be efficacious. So my, my bigger, um, push would be hand hygiene, because that's what breaks the chain of infection. And, you know, the cleaning that you can do, the, the twice-a-day. So hand hygiene and masking, honestly, that's, in that environment, that's what, it can make a huge difference. We just need people to do it.
Okay, so the hygiene, this is what I hear. Hand hygiene to me is, uh, washing hands, having soap available or hand sanitizer available um, within our, uh, facilities.
Yes, so hand hygiene, so you should always wash your hands with soap and water after you use the bathroom. That's a, that's a no-hand gel environment.
Uh, yes, uh, I don't wanna go there, uh, but yes, that, that, that is true. Yes, we need to make sure that does happen. Uh, I frequently don't see that in my ba, in, uh, public bathrooms, but, uh, I, I do it myself. Uh, however, I just need to make, whi- which is good, which is a good point, uh, because I wanna make sure that our public restrooms have, have the soap, um, that, to be able to wash their hands. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for saying that. Appreciate it.
Mayor?
Councilman DeCiccio.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Doctor, for being here today, and thank you, staff, for putting this together. I'm going to be supporting it. Um, I don't know if that was coming from my end. Is that, do you hear static? Mayor? There's major static coming through.
Yes, um.
Okay, oh, I didn't know. That wasn't mine, though, was it, Mayor?
It appeared to be coming. But your box was lighting up on my screen, but, but we've solved this, at least for now.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Now, again, I wanna thank everybody for working on this. Um, you know, I've been an advocate of opening up as soon as possible. And just to cover, uh, even a conversation I had with the city manager earlier this week on this, there is a real problem that's going to occur, not now, that we're going to start seeing in the future. And that's this wealth disparity, this education disparity between the rich and the poor, for a lot of other reasons as well, but COVID did not hurt, did not help this in any way, shape, or form. COVID actually helped hurt it, and the way we react to it also, I believe, became problematic. If you look at the wealthy school districts, they've all pretty much opened up. The poorer school districts are still shut down, and they're not opening up for a week or two, and some of them are thinking about even going until January. It's just, that is going to create an education disparity that we're not gonna see, and that's going to have an impact on us well into the future, and it's going to be a problem. The wealth disparities are occurring already. People that are wealthy are able to take care of their kids, are able to stay with them, while you've got individuals that work, the single mom that works over at Bashes or Fry's or Safeway, as a cashier, works every day, goes in, does everything, has a hard time taking care of their children because they don't, they can't afford to be able to take care of the healthcare, right? So you're going, this lockdown is going to have an impact on us for a very long time. The conversation I had with the city manager was this. We need to look at those things that are education related, things that impact the poor in particular, and find every means available to open up those services to people that are poor. If we do not do that, we're going to be contributing to the long-term problems of the city and actually to our nation and our state. So from my end of this, whatever we can do to hyper-focus on those areas for people that can least afford it, we need to be looking at that today and finding ways to open up those services to them, libraries. And I appreciate that we're going to be opening up our libraries. And that's not coming from me, Mayor, just so you know. There's no noise or static on my end here. So it's coming from someone else. So the bottom line is if we do not look at this in a future way of how this is going to impact our city and our population, and if we don't start pressuring some of these school districts to start looking at what other school districts are doing around the state, then we are way behind. We are failing as leaders by not opening up sooner, by not finding a way to get these people taken care of. So we need to do that. I don't know how we deal with the elderly, I think that's going to be a problem on its own because they're very lonely. These senior centers that bring seniors in there, that's about the only place they can get their meals. I know we're delivering meals to people, but they also need social interaction. They need to be around people, they need to be able to know and see someone else that's smiling rather than watching the TV, a box, which is basically an enemy in all of our homes, that's what the TV is. So we need to be able to look at this in a different way rather than saying, hey, we're going to open up some of these services or not. I strongly believe we need to be looking at the poor, especially those dealing with education, technology, and open those things up today. Find every way to do that. And if we have to shift resources around, then that's what we need to do. Thank you, Mayor, but I'm going to be supporting this motion.
Thank you so much. Uh, any additional council member comments? All right, um, thank you, Doctor, for joining us, we really appreciate your advice.
Thanks so much for having me.
I will turn to the Vice Mayor to see if we have a motion.
Yes, I have a motion to approve item 15, which is Phase 2A and includes outdoor park actives. I would also like for staff to continue researching and implementing ways to allocate additional resources in the form of PPE, testing, cleaning supplies or other needed resources to city zip codes that are having higher, higher than average positivity rates or community risk. Staff will return to the council in two weeks to review current metrics and discuss Phase 2B, which includes phasing and some indoor city services.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Uh, we do have one member of the public here to comment on this item. Uh, so we will go ahead to public comment right now with Summer.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and City Council. For seven months, Phoenix families have shown up to their beloved neighborhood parks to see them enveloped in yellow crime tapes. Our picnic benches, Ramadas playgrounds, last half, fitness equipment, basketball and volleyball courts have remained closed while every city surrounding our borders reopened months ago. And considering we have more than three months of continued case decline, this is not acceptable and will not be acceptable moving forward. The metrics our Mayor and City Council have put into place, for continuing to keep our parks closed, need further evaluation. Relying on the National Park Service to guide Phoenix's response to reopening our parks seems counterintuitive when compared to our surrounding neighbors' responsible responses. In closing, I would like to point out that children of Phoenix are in daycare, preschool, middle and high school, they travel, they go to grocery stores and restaurants, to some places of worship. Why we get deemed a slide or a picnic table dangerous is beyond the pale at this point. I expect more from this board in the future on this issue and will continue to fight again if we see them closed. I would respectfully ask that the reopening of parks begin immediately as not to continue to waste taxpayer dollars on tape that we will just be taking down. We have a constitutional right to gather in our public parks. We will continue to show up to our parks, take down the tape and enjoy our time with our families with or without your approval of the immediate reopening. I would like to point out the waste that is created just by taping up one park and what the cost of that is, what positive outcome is coming from keeping our playgrounds.
Thank you so much, uh, for our staff. Do we have anyone else from the public to comment on this item?
No, Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Any council member comments, uh, before we vote on this item? All right, thank you. So this vote will open up our outdoor parks facilities. It comes out of the time that Dr. Anthony Fauci has encouraged Americans to spend more time outdoors. So I think it is a responsible decision and I look forward to supporting the motion. Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. We next move to the liquor license portion of our application. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve items two through six, except items two and six. Staff recommends disapproval of item six based on the applicant not paying his fees and police department recommendation for disapproval.
Second.
Wonderful, thank you. We have a motion on items three through five. Any council member comments on items three through five? Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
We next go to item number two, which is an item in Councilwoman Pastor's council district. Uh, we do have members of the public here to speak on this. I will turn to Councilwoman Pastor for any opening comments.
Kate?
Uh, yes, Council, would, would you like to begin with a staff presentation or comments?
Probably the, the comments first.
Uh, wonderful, thank you so much. Um, we will start with Zet Camille, followed by Gilda Schwendiner. Apologies for my pronunciation.
Greetings, Mayor and all attending city council members. I'm here today because the city has failed once again to stand in solidarity with the community and all invested in the Black Lives Matter street mural. For two months, we have been given the runaround and told untruth about a pilot project that was never intended to be taken serious.
And Zet, we are only taking comments on a liquor license? If you have any comments on the liquor license, please provide those now. If you have general comments, those are in the public comment portion of our meeting.
Gilda, this is for the liquor license.
Okay, um, I don't know if all of these are for liquor license or for general public comment, but we will next go. Yes.
Mayor, this is Councilwoman Pastor. Mayor, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Pastor.
Um, I believe Gilda is the liquor license owner, so I'm not sure if she's wanting to speak on the liquor license or if not, then that's fine. I just wanted to make clear that this was about the liquor license.
Uh, much appreciated, thank you. So we had the other two people, I think that was Zet, and then we have William Santos signed up. So maybe we can do Gilda last since she is the applicant and if there are community concerns about the liquor license, then the applicant can address them. Does that work? All right, so William, if you have any comments, uh, we will turn to you next, but we are only taking comments on the liquor license that is before us as a council.
Mayor William is no longer on the line.
Wonderful. I think we can turn to Gilda then if she has any comments, but I suspect since we did not have any public members, um, during the review process comment against this one, so. Is Gilda with us? Okay, then I will turn to Councilwoman Pastor for a motion. I was unable to hear that comment. Gilda?
Yeah?
Okay, did you have any additional comments for the council or?
No.
Wonderful, I think we had a little bit, uh, of, uh, confusion over the, the agendized items and so we'll have general public comment at the end of the meeting. It appears there is no one here with comments on your liquor license.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Councilwoman Pastor, do you have a motion?
Yes, I moved to approve, uh, the liquor license. This is a specialty market, uh, that opened up in April of this year and it sells products, uh, Central America. And this will, uh, sell wine and beer will be part, will only be portions of their sale. So I approve this, uh, liquor license.
Second.
Motion down to second, roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Wonderful, thank you. And for, again, for members of public who would like to comment on a general item that is in the public comment item at the end of our meeting. We next turn to item number six, which is in license in Councilwoman Stark's district. So I will turn to her.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, staff has recommended disapproval of this because the applicant didn't pay his fees. So I think we need to move forward with a recommendation for disapproval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you, that concludes the liquor license portion of our agenda. City Clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, Vice Mayor, uh, do we have a, an emotion and noting, um, items nine and 10 had originally been pulled for public comment, but the person wishing to comment is not with us, so we could add those back into the omnibus? Uh, nine and 10.
Nine and 10 to the, okay, perfect. It's a motion to approve items seven through 79, except the following. Items 18, 32, 33, 35, 36, 37, 38, 41, 44, 49, 51, 69, 74, 75, 77, 78, 79, nine and, and 10. Item 36 is as revised. Item 47 has been withdrawn. Item 76 is requested to be continued to November 4th and 79 is requested to be continued to April 7th, 2021 and excluding these items for public comment, 11 and 17.
Second.
Wonderful, thank you, and confirming that, uh, items nine and 10 are no longer in the omnibus? Or there are, um, they will not, they will be in the omnibus?
They will be, yes. Yeah, I included those, um, when I read the, I should have gone nine and 10 first, but I put those at the end.
Perfect. Councilman Nowakowski?
Um, item 77 is still on the agenda, right?
Uh, yes, item 77, we do have members of the public here and it may be, um, yes.
Mayor, this is the clerk.
That one requires a public hearing, so that would not stay in the omnibus.
Mayor, this is the clerk. I just wanted to confirm items nine and 10 are not being pulled out, uh, from the omnibus. They're being recommended for approval potentially.
Yes, they are.
Yes, um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That's my understanding, my understanding as well.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Wonderful, thank you, good teamwork on that one. We next move to item number 11, settlement of claim in Lopez versus City of Phoenix. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item 11.
Second.
Thank you, uh, we do have one member of the public to address us on this item. Marcus, the floor is yours.
Hello, just want to make sure you guys can hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, um, and of course, this should be approved and I'm here today because we have 390 Phoenix police on the Brady list, a list that sadly had to be tabulated and updated by ABC 15. I'm also here today because what Mayor Kate calls housing for homeless, more, more reasonable folks would call a skillet. Armed with the idiom, we are all aware of that. Armed with the idiom, we are all aware of that, that you can cook your food on the asphalt here in Phoenix. You all decided to one-up that and cook human bodies.
This is an inappropriate comment, you may comment on the item before the council.
Okay, so, um.
We lost him?
Oh, we appear to, perhaps he has, he did not have any comments on the actual agendized item. All right, any council member comments on the agendized item? Roll call.
DeCiccio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? I apologize, Councilwoman Waring, I didn't catch that.
Right, no.
Thank you. Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven two.
We next move to item seventeen, healthcare connection services. Do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item seventeen.
Second.
We do have members of the public to address the council on this item. We will begin with Michelle, followed by Lazai.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, so my name is Michelle Hornstein, and I've worked for SSP America for almost six years. I was laid off with hundreds of coworkers on September twenty-fifth. So thank you, Mayor Gallego, for considering the hospitality industry during this time. I'm here in solidarity with HMS host workers as they still have not been given proper recall rights and are being fired this month. SSP agreed during our recent negotiations to give us twenty-four months for recall starting the day we were officially terminated. We also have the ability to renegotiate and extend recall if business.
Michelle, if you could keep your comments as well on the topic of this agendized item. Michelle, did you have any comments on whether the city should help provide healthcare connections? Okay, we will go to Lazai, followed by Vivian.
Mayor, Lazai is no longer on the line.
Thank you, do we still have Vivian?
Mayor, we're checking. Yes, Vivian is on, Mayor.
Wonderful, Vivian, the floor is yours.
I apologize, can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right, there we go, I am so sorry about that. I just wanted to say again, you know, thank you again for taking the time to listen to us. And you know, like so many others, my spouse and I are furloughed hospitality workers. I personally, I love this initiative. I run a group of nearly two hundred host employees, and the notice of our loss of insurance actually threw us into a lot of chaos. My comparatively small group was actually really lucky. We had someone who knew a person who worked with the ACA market. So we were able to have someone who was able to provide us with the assistance like this initiative is talking about on a significant.
Excuse me, Mayor, this is the city attorney. These comments are also not applicable to the item.
Okay, thank you, city attorney. Vivian, do you have a comment on whether or not the city should approve healthcare connection services? Okay.
I guess, I.
Yes.
I apologize about that. Yes, what I was, we had that available to us on a significantly smaller scale. So we were able to have people assist, like you were talking about with this initiative, to continue to assist people with finding these. So if one man was able to settle the fears and stress of a hundred people, I can only imagine the success we would have on a much grander scale.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you, so again, this is an item to provide a contract with KEO Health Connections that would allow the city to support their work in providing consulting services for people in the hospitality industry and others who've been displaced from their work, help them understand what are their healthcare options. We know the marketplace is confusing and just understanding what costs what and what is the best plan, given everyone's individual needs. We hope will be helpful and at least partially respond to some of the concerns that our residents have raised. Council member comments? A Councilwoman.
Mayor, I'm sorry. So in this RFQ, is it an RFQ or an RFI? It's an RFQ? Can you hear me?
Yes, Mayor, the Chief Financial Officer, Councilwoman Pastor Denise Olson is here. She can respond to the questions on the solicitation, Denise?
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council, Councilwoman Pastor, this was an RFQ.
Okay, and it's an RFQ in order to help our hospitality industry and local small businesses in making, basically making awareness of connections to the health insurance market? Or what exactly, I just need clarity on it.
I guess, thank you, so this is services to help residents connect with health insurance coverage through various sources, including the health insurance marketplace and other services that may be available through the state.
In order to connect them and able to get that, those benefits.
That is correct.
At a reasonable cost, I hope.
That is correct.
Okay, I was, okay, I was thinking it was a different item that I believe will be coming up, so that's why I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Thank you, and I understand that Carmen has joined us with a comment on this item. Carmen, are you supportive of the city entering into an agreement on healthcare connector services?
Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Carmen Quintana. I've worked for the HSN for thirty-three years. And I support this that they're standing. And I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
And I'm hoping, yes, can the interpreter be heard?
Yes. Yes.
My name is Carmen Quintana, and I believe, she said I've been working for the hospitality for thirteen years, and I support and I wish to go back, return back to work.
Okay, I think that concludes public comment, is that right?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Mayor, this is the city manager.
Manager, yes.
Yeah, I believe that there was a mix-up on item seventy-nine that was inadvertently in the omnibus motion. I believe that either the Vice Mayor or Councilmember Garcia may want to ask to reconsider that.
Yeah, so I, so I would like to make a motion to reconsider item seventy-nine for today.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Garcia?
Second.
And then, voice vote, all those in favor for reconsideration, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And then, city attorney or city manager, would we reconsider that? Would I appropriate now to have a motion on that item?
Mayor, you could do it now, or you could do it in the normal course of the items when we get to that. It's up to you.
Okay. I, why don't we just, so that, Councilmember Garcia, I believe this is an item in your district, do you want to just do it now?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I believe there is some public comment as well, and then the applicants, I don't know if they're on, so just, so long as we could get them on at the same time.
Okay, then maybe we should just do it, and people will probably be startled to have it right now. So maybe we should do it in the normal order of business then.
That works for us, thank you.
All right, but while you have the floor, would you like to make any comments or a motion on item eighteen, which is the agreement with T-Mobile for tablets and Wi-Fi access?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, and I know we have a long agenda, so I'll be quick. But Cindy, housing folks have done amazing work. Earlier this year, we were able to approve tablets for school-aged children in public housing, and now we're moving to seniors. And so again, I just wanted to applaud Cindy, the staff, the way we were able to support not only the children, but now seniors to be able to get their health, healthcare needs met and all the support and being able to see the relatives, all those sorts of things. And so I just want to say a big thank you and how proud I am of our staff and the council to be able to make this happen. So I motion approve item eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I certainly agree, I got to join Councilmember Garcia and Councilwoman Pastor at a tablet distribution event, and it was fabulous to see parents getting tablets in that lifeline to help educate their kids and be able to participate in virtual learning. I know that for many of us who are parents, we've had to learn a lot about how to become educators and that internet access, as well as two years of service, is very valuable. This item also includes investments in our partnership with Experience Matters, where older adults will help our younger students with their educational goals, and that's one of my favorite programs. So thank you to our youth and education folks for their hard work on this as well. Certainly a good news item from my perspective. Any, Councilwoman Pastor?
So obviously, education is a passion as a natural teacher, and all of us are natural teachers because we're parents and we teach our kids. And they learn a lot from us, good and bad. But I am just excited about our council and really want to thank and grateful for our council because each and every one of us has a passion in this field of wanting to make sure that there's equity across the board of education and learning. And this is one way of getting tablets into communities that more than likely would not have that access. I'm also going to be very excited and pretty soon with the council on October twenty-seventh, when we discuss about the digital divide, because I think everybody will be happy in the movement of where Phoenix is going and that we, as a council, will put ourselves on a national and international platform. And so just really grateful for all our good work and making sure that we provide our community, always provide our community with the best. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thanks for your work on the digital divide. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I also want to thank Cindy, want to thank staff. I think it's been a roller coaster, but I appreciate everyone's creativity in trying to make sure that we give the resources that our students and that everyone needs in this time. I have one child, two kids now, doing online learning, and I see the value of that, and I see how important this is for our community. So I'm very excited to be able to support this, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Next on our agenda is item thirty-two, revision to chapter eighteen of the Phoenix City Code, Small Business Enterprise Participation Program. Will the city clerk please read the title?
Item thirty-two is for ordinance G six seven four two and ordinance amending chapter eighteen, article six, article seven, and article eight of the Phoenix City Code relating to the Small Business Enterprise Participation Program, Small Business Enterprise Procurement Program and Certification of Small Business Enterprises.
Wonderful, thank you, Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item thirty-two.
Second.
Thank you, our Small Business Enterprise Program has been a great asset to our city and helping us build a small business community. I think this is one we should continue to talk about. We have heard from some members of our design and engineering committee, community that they are interested in being part of this community. And we may want to talk about whether a member of the public should be part of the oversight committee at some point, but I think this is a good, good one to move forward today, so I'll be supporting the motion. Any additional council member comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item thirty-three is related to golf instruction services, an opportunity to bring some revenue to our golf program. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item thirty-three.
Second.
Any council member comments on this item? Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia? Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams? I apologize, Williams? I'm sorry, I see Councilwoman Williams' monitor lighting up, so I just wanted to double-check, Councilwoman Williams? Guardado?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Williams, can you?
Yes.
Thank you so much, I can hear you now, Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight one.
Item thirty-five is the RFP for Downtown Redevelopment Area Plan Update Consulting Services. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item thirty-five.
Second.
Any council member comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes seven two.
We next move to item thirty-six, which is a contract with Arizona Fresh Holdings for redevelopment of the Del Rio former landfill, and a exciting item. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, this is a really exciting item. It's going to bring jobs, it's going to bring food, it's going to bring training, a lot of things that we need, and it's obviously reusing an area that we've been trying to get done for a long time. Again, long agenda, I wish I could talk more about it, but I'm just really excited to. Again, long agenda, I wish I could talk more about it, but I'm just really excited to recommend that we approve item 36 and thanks Chris Mackey and the Arizona Fresh team for all the great work they've done to make this happen.
Second.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, did you want to make a, you said we have a motion and a second, is that right?
Yes.
Fabulous. Certainly is a, a great news item. The community has been working on this site and coming up with plans for quite a while. More than 25 years of work goes into today, today's vote and it also honors some of our commuting processes, including along the riverfront and discussion about how we might bring more fresh food to this portion of our city as well as a new park that our residents have been talking about my entire time in public life. So we'll take a brownfield and turn it into a health food field, which is something we have been focused on for years. Thank you to Guadalupe Miranda and his team for the Stellar Project as well as our team at, at CED for the work on it. I look forward to supporting this item. Any additional comments? Councilman Noakowski.
Mayor, I just really want to thank Guadalupe Miranda. He was raised in South Phoenix, really helped out a lot of youth from soccer teams to baseball teams and one of his dreams was to really create something for the community and working along with his partners and ASU, we're going to have something incredible. Some, a, a facility, a building, a place where people can have entertainment and people from across the country and across the border will come just to enjoy it. So I just really want to thank Guadalupe Garcia for everything he's done and just making this great project happen.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I just want to thank everybody, I really, who I really want to thank and I'm grateful for is the community, the longevity and their persistence of wanting to see this built. It's been taken many, many years and not look at a, a brownfield and not look, look at something that is going to be vibrant and that's going to connect the North and the South together and create culture, the great culture that is represented there. So, very excited over this project.
Mayor. Councilwoman, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I, I want to echo everyone's comments. This is really a great project and it's a unique project. I think it's going to be quite the draw regionally. And as I've said before, I'm really jealous that it's in District Eight. Congratulations, Councilwoman Garcia. Thank you.
Thank you, good, good comments, Councilwoman. And Councilmember Garcia and Vice Mayor, I just wanted to confirm your motion was as revised.
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Y E S, yes.
Thank you. Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Waring, Waring, you're with us, woo!
It's a day of, 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 uh, exciting votes. We next move to item 37, which is a development agreement with the Hubbard site. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 37.
Second.
Second that.
A motion and a second. We do have a one comment card. We will, uh, go to Nick Wood. Thank you. So, and I, I could not hear perfectly, but you said you were up here on behalf of the applicant and could answer questions, is that what?
Yes, yes Mayor, it's, it's Nick Woods, Nellin Wimmer, one there as on the center and I represent Hubbard and I'm just here to answer any questions.
Wonderful, thank you. Second time was much clearer from my perspective. I guess I do have one question for you. Will you tell us about what you, your, you and your client see as the demand for residential development in our downtown right now?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, the, the demand numbers, at least from the studies that my client has done, obviously when you, when you build a property that is approaching a hundred million dollars by the time you're all in, you want to make sure that there's a market for it. It's interesting how the demand for residential throughout the city, but particularly in urban centers continues to increase dramatically and, and part, partly in light of the number of people who have chosen to move here from places like Seattle and Portland and San Francisco and LA and Minneapolis and Chicago and all the places that have been seeing some, some challenges. And the people see Phoenix as a wonderful place to live, so the demand is, is right now very high.
Okay, so, because this project began its process before COVID-19, but you, like, there is strong interest and this is a project that's...
That's correct. There, there was a tremendous amount, Mayor, there was a tremendous amount of momentum already in the marketplace and they're actually seeing it accelerate.
Phoenix is hot, as Chris Mackey would tell us.
It is.
Any additional questions for Mr. Wood? Any additional council member comments?
Just, just a quick one, Mayor, is this item 37, just to reconfirm, I couldn't hear at the beginning.
Uh, yes, item 37.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman DeCiccio, and we'll go to Councilwoman Pastor now, or no, I think I saw Councilman Noakowski first and then Councilwoman Pastor.
Just, so, just how did this?
I think maybe he just wanted to confirm the number. Councilman Noakowski followed by Councilwoman Pastor.
Mayor, I just want to say this is a great example of what we can do in downtown Phoenix. Um, there's a master plan all the way from Seventh Street to Central Avenue, from Roosevelt to Margaret Hands Park, and this is one of the key elements of that. It's going to be, what a great, what a great piece of the puzzle that we're going to have and also giving back to the community. Basically, a hundred thousand dollars is going back into our housing department where they're going to create a fund to make sure that we can build some workforce housing and affordable housing for future individuals that want to live in downtown, that want to work in downtown, and that want to study in downtown Phoenix. So I just really want to thank Nick and, and Hubbard for being great community partners, for really thinking and helping the city of Phoenix to create a fund to help out the workforce housing that we need in the city of Phoenix and at the same time providing 10% of workforce housing in the project that they have in front of us. So I see this as a new trend. There are going to be some pioneers in our city of Phoenix when it comes to workforce housing and affordable housing in the future. Thank you and thank you Mayor for your leadership.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I believe Chris Myers is there, I hope, or someone from the legal.
Yes.
And I don't know, or if the question is to Chris Myers or to Ed Zucker or, I don't know where the question goes. But in my wed meeting, there was a discussion about the Hubbard donating a hundred thousand to the city towards affordable housing. How, how does, I, I believe this is the first time this, something like this has happened and how is this going to be administered? And who will be overseeing it and what are the guidelines?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Pastor. So we have Chris Mackey here. It is part of the development agreement, as I understand it, that it is a requirement, will be a requirement of the development agreement for that contribution to be made that will go to the Housing Department Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It will be administered by the Housing Department, but of course, under policy direction of the city council as to how that actually gets dispersed into affordable housing projects.
So then, in the future, is this what's going to be expected from other projects? Is this setting a precedent in order to, uh, I would say for giblets?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Pastor, Councilwoman Pastor, that's a good question. In this case, this was a voluntary offer by the developer, but certainly if the council would decide, would like to establish a policy, that would be something the council could consider, but it is currently not a requirement or a part of any of our policies to make it a requirement. In this case, it is a voluntary contribution, but it will be written into the development agreement such that it will be required upon council action on this item.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, I understand that it's voluntary and everything, but there's always, as I was getting texts after that meeting, a whole conversation that I didn't even think was going to spark, of the fact that it was a, a, a perception, there's a big perception issue now regarding that and kind of a, a quick pro quo image of what that looks like. And several lawyers that contacted me on it said, so, even some of the language that was used. And so I'm just putting it on the record because I do have some concerns in this for the future so that there, there, there is a discussion and it is on the record showing that there is some hesitation.
I think it's important to have the city attorney reply to that. Concerned, Councilwoman. Quick pro quo.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, this is a provision that was negotiated as part of an agreement. Our, our staff has looked at it and believe that it was, that it is okay in this situation. It doesn't necessarily establish a precedent or anything that we would do in future, future agreements unless, as the city manager said, the council set that kind of a policy. So it's, it's really part of a negotiation on this one situation and doesn't create a, a standard or a requirement or an obligation on others and is certainly not a precedent that it needs to go in other agreements or documents.
Councilmember Garcia followed by Councilman Noakowski.
Thank you Mayor. This, this property happens to be in District Eight, it seems, it's the theme today, it's District Eight Day today on our, our city council meeting. A couple of things I want to say about this, I actually want to thank Councilwoman Pastor because I think she's for a long time has demanded a lot of, of the giblets and, and be, us being able to show what the community, the, the, what's better, the betterment of the community looks like and what we need to do. Same with Councilwoman Guardado, I think the three of us share that, that we really want to be able to prove what's, what's in it for the community when it comes to these. And so as a result of this conversation, obviously we have a recent, a recent case that went into the courts. I really do think, and I don't know if it's to staff or to you Mayor, that we have a, a discussion of, of being able to set up a process for, for all of cases like this so that we know what we're going into. And so it's not this expectation or we start maybe thinking, you know, or, or for people to think that, that there is anything like what, what the Councilwoman Pastor suggested. And so I, I do applaud and I'm, I'm supporting this project. I think they did good work with the neighbors. Also, a housing trust fund is something that we need for affordable housing, so I'm excited that even in the way it got, it came to us today, I think the fact that a housing trust fund is now on the table, especially as we go in to next year where Cindy and our housing department have worked really hard to, to really take on the lack of, of affordable housing in the city. I think this fund could be really successful. We shouldn't look for just contributions of this sort. We should really look to see how we could grow this fund and make sure that housing is, is available for our communities. But, you know, I won't be supporting this item, but I really do think we need to clear up a process. You know, there's some articles written about this and there's questions coming to all of us about it. I'd prefer that we have one uniform process and we have a policy session, work-study session, whatever you feel best Mayor, so that we can sort this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor has added a policy discussion about the use of this tool to the next Workforce and Economic Development Subcommittee and that to me seems like a responsible place to begin this discussion. I, I recognize that not everyone is on that Subcommittee and it is something we may want to, to bring to the entire council. I agree, we need to be very clear about how we're using the tool and what are our goals. I for one, I'm a little bit concerned about the amount we are using it for residential towers right now and if that is the best policy goal. So I think in addition to the items you mentioned, that is a very responsible conversation to have, but it is quite complicated and I think if Councilwoman Pastor is willing to begin that at the Subcommittee level, that is a, a good starting point for this conversation.
Yes, yes, I, I, yes, I will start that conversation. I, I do believe in, in the Housing Trust Fund because I have seen many people intent from, to benefit from it and get them into housing. It's just, what is important to me is that we direct or the council directs or creates that housing plan, have the policies and the rules already set into place. That's, that's just where my, my, I guess, weariness or caution or deliberateness is, is, is happening internally of how this is happening and, and exactly the way it's happening. And so that's, that's, that's why I'm bringing it up and, and we can have this discussion within the commu, within the committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Noakowski.
Oh, thank you Mayor. Mayor, that's a great conversation that we're having and I can't wait until it gets back to our Subcommittee that our Chairperson, Laura Pastor shares. One of the things that we've been talking about for years is creating a trust fund. Lately, we've been doing 10% of the affordable housing, but that's been on just a, a short period of time. That's as long as a gyplet lasts. So after eight years, 10 years, then that affordable housing leaves. This is a way for permanent housing, for workforce housing and for low-income individuals. So I think it's a great idea. I think it takes it to the next level instead of just having 10% or 15 or 20% at a short period of time that we have permanent housing in downtown. And I had the privilege and also Laura, we both went to St. Mary's High School and Central City has changed a lot. Very Hispanic, all the way from Central City to Grant, to Garfield, to Ninth Street. And we're starting to see things change. We're individuals that were brought up in these neighborhoods and downtown can't even afford to live downtown. So the whole gentification's happening and this is a great opportunity for us to allow those individuals, especially the, the youth, the children of those families to come back and live in downtown and be a part of what's this great community is all about. So I just really want to thank the leadership and everyone who made this all possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven two.
Item 38 is to amend the business terms for Phoenix Central Station Transit Center. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve item 38.
Second.
Any council member comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio. 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 Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. I apologize, council member Waring. Waring. Williams. Williams. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Thank you. And I believe Councilman Waring is a no. Communicated a no, but I know it was hard to hear.
Okay, thank you. That would be six to one.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I have a no. I'm sorry. So I'm a no. I apologize.
Thank you, councilman.
You can hear me. Okay, thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the item moves forward. Item 41 is our membership dues for Westmark, one of our great partners. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I have a motion to approve item 41.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments?
I have comments, Mayor.
Please go ahead and thank you for your service on this partnership.
Yes, I just want to thank, I just want to thank everyone at Westmark. It's been, it's been great to be serving on this Committee. Been working with Centra, the CEO and the president of Westmark for the last year. Very excited for the things that we're going to be doing moving forward. I know that we're going to start, you know, we've been having conversations over a lot of different things. There's a lot of things that are happening on the West Side which are very exciting, bringing economic development into the West Side. I think it's a really great thing. You know, we're going to start to have conversations on how is it that our neighbor cities can actually help with some of the issues that in Phoenix we're trying to tackle when it comes to transportation, when it comes to our homeless population as well. So I'm excited for us to continue this partnership and to be in part of this Committee. It's been, it's been great. It was a learning experience for me and now I'm excited for us to be able to continue this and being able to work with them together on how do we make sure that the West Side continues to grow and how we can actually bring different type of opportunities with all the challenges that we have in front of us. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your service on the Westmark Board of Directors. I don't know that people always realize how much of Phoenix is on the West Side, but it's been a great partnership. And during your time on Westmark, we have had some great interest in bringing community amenities successfully to the West Side as well as a cool restaurant pop-up and retail partnership. So thank you for all of your work in that area. Any additional council member comments? Rule call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Waring. Guardado.
No.
Thank you, Councilman Waring. Guardado.
Yes.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight, one.
Passes eight, one noting Councilman Waring was a no. We next move to item 49, which is building a parking lot at the airport. Vice Mayor.
Yes, motion to approve item 44.
Second.
49? Did we have 40? Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor was ahead of me. We, item 44 is Phoenix Police Reserve Foundation. So yes, motion to approve item 44.
44, yes.
And second.
Motion and a second. We do have two members of the public to address the council on this item. And want to remind everyone, we will be only taking public comment on whether or not the city should accept the donation from the Phoenix Police Reserve Foundation. Amy, the floor is yours, followed by Jacob.
Yes, hi. On the Phoenix Police Reserve Foundation donation, Officer Kyle Frick has killed a lone suspect twice. Why did the city reward his behavior with a medal instead of firing him? He killed someone once again in 2019 and again in 2020.
Amy, you really, yes, okay. So again, we are only taking comment on whether to take a donation from the Reserve Foundation. Members of the public wishing to address the council on other items may do so during public comment. Jacob. Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Of course, my name is Jacob Rafe from the Rising Project. It's a pleasure to speak with you all again. Though it were under better circumstances, I wanted to provide comment about yet another donation to the Phoenix Police Department, this time by the Phoenix Police Reserve Foundation for four vehicles, adding up to a grand total of $218,000. So while I expect for today's ruling to be in favor of accepting the donation, it would be permissive me to not express concern over the continued appropriation of resources by a department with a sordid history of racial bias profiling and disproportionate excessive force against the Black and Brown community. And as of recent, the unlawful and predatory targeting peaceful protesters exercising their First Amendment rights to uplift said communities. Now, we're still, I'm connecting this to the item today, but since I last spoke with the council in September, we have continued to witness a police department sworn to protect us operate outside the confines of their authority by predatorially arresting, harassing and assaulting peaceful citizens with impunity in attempt to suppress their constitutional rights to assemble and protest. At this point, that is not a hyperbolic statement. The actions of this police department on the ground are reinforced by unsubstantiated charges leading to the imprisonment of citizens who not only, who only wish to use their voice. Now, while some have the fortune of being released in the day's time for ambiguous infractions, others with open cases brought about by similar charges, especially singled-out Black organizers, find themselves at mercy of the judicial system which disproportionately rules against people of that racial background.
And you need to start connecting it to the donation.
Right, right. So, so, right. So I guess after today's vote, I would just advise you all to take into consideration the perspective of your fellow citizens who might view allowing continued allocation of undeserved resources as an inadvertent support of a police culture, police state culture. And I believe the police department is undeserving of further resources. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Any council member comments on whether to accept the donation from the Phoenix Reserve Foundation? Rule call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams. I apologize. Williams.
This is Noakowski. I'm a yes.
Thank you, councilman. Williams.
Are you saying Williams?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Okay, I've responded three times. I've been a yes all along.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Now we move to item 49, construction services for the parking lot at the airport. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on 49?
Yes, motion to approve item 49.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any council member comments? Rule call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes seven, two.
Item 51 is the authorization to extend the parking meter contract. Do we have a motion on item 51?
Motion to approve item 51.
Second.
Any council member comments?
I did have a comment.
Yes, Councilman Waring, please.
So I brought up a couple of things to the staff about these parking meters. And just one of them is a little bit of an issue, makes them a little bit unworkable, is the, I guess it would be plastic that covers the area where you see how much time you're purchasing, either in the glare if you're out in the sun or if they get kind of scratched up. You can't see, you know, if you only want an hour, you can't really see what, how much time is on there. It's a little bit frustrating. I've had that experience a couple of times, or meters that just don't seem to be working. So, and I don't park that much downtown because I like to walk. So, yeah, I've had some concerns about the quality of the product, frankly. And I just wanted to sort of make that known as we're extending this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Waring. I also have had some, seen some opportunities for our parking meters to improve and times when they have not worked as I had hoped. So I think we can continue to look at this particular product.
Mayor.
Council.
Mayor, this is Keeney Knudsen, Street Transportation Director. I just wanted to address Councilman Waring's question and your comments as well. That is something we're aware of. We know with the sun here in Arizona that we do get a lot of burn-in on the screens for the parking meters and we go out and do look at maintenance on those. But it is something we'll renew our efforts on that to make sure that that is not an issue we have currently with our parking meters out there.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Just like everyone else, especially about midnoon, about 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, there's a glare and at times even me trying to put my hand over it, I cannot see if it took my card, if it didn't take my card or even if I can add minutes. And then there are times where I don't even know if the meter's working. And so I do think that, as, I do think the sun is, with these meters, are eating at the plastic faster and there's more maintenance needs to happen. And I've called several times. What I do is take the picture and I call. But I'm not sure afterwards because I don't go to the same meter if they're repaired or not. So I do think we need to look at that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So this is a short-term extension and so does give us opportunities to continue to look for the best products. Rule call.
DeCiccio.
And Mayor, just to explain my vote, I'm a reluctant yes. It's only because Keeney is presenting this and I know he's on his game. But I think everybody's had the same experience with these meters. But again, if it wasn't for Keeney, I wouldn't be doing this today. Thank you, Mayor.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Waring.
No. Did you guys hear me? No.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight, one.
Next, we move to our planning and zoning items, beginning with item 69, the purchase of an economic impact study for historic preservation. An exciting opportunity for us to partner with the national leader in this particular area. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, motion to approve item 69.
Second.
Motion and a second. We do have one member of the public to address the council on this item, so we'll begin with Dan Clocky.
Mayor, members of the council, this is Dan Clocky. I serve as the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. And I'd just like to offer my support for this item. Like any business or development that the city's trying to attract, we typically analyze sort of the cost-benefit of supporting a project and I think this study will do a great job with that and with historic preservation in general. So I'd ask for your support. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor.
For this, since 26 of the historic districts are within District Four, I believe this study will tell us about the density and the diversity and the resiliency of our historic neighborhoods as well as the contribution of older housing makes towards affordable housing in our city. I hope that for a result where decision-makers at all levels will support our city's historic resources. You can see it throughout, throughout our city on how the historic districts brings communities together. I can name many of them, but one in particular that a lot of people are moving into old, more mature generation and also young hipsters is Coronado. And they all gather together to do their porch gathering and also their bike riding. Many of the other districts also do it like Willow, but Coronado definitely has an interesting vibe in there with also with their artists and their artistic abilities. So I think this is very important for our city.
Thank you. Any additional council member comments? Rule call.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, Councilwoman Stark, yes. We should have, yes.
I was trying to get my camera on. I just wanted to say, I think this study is very important. I, Councilwoman Pastor said it all right. It really is going to be important. But I will tell you that the gentleman that is going to be a part of the study is a leader in the field and we're lucky to have him. Thank you.
Thank you. I certainly agree with you on that item. I am also excited that this study will look at how our historic housing contributes to our affordable housing, which is, I think, an issue of priority to this entire council and this will be very important data. Rule call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight one.
Item seventy-four is a general plan amendment for one hundred and Seventh Avenue, Jones Avenue, Ninety-first Avenue. It is an item in Council District Seven. Councilman Nowakowski, if it works for you, we'll begin with the staff report.
That works out good. Thank you.
We'll turn to Alan Stevenson, our Planning and Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Item seventy-four and seventy-five can be heard together. They are related items. One's a general plan amendment and the other's the corresponding zoning case. And then separate actions afterwards, I think, will help us be a little more efficient use of the council's time. So item seventy-four is a general plan amendment to change the general plan land use designations for about a hundred and thirty-seven acre site that's bounded by one hundred and Seventh Avenue over to on the east or on the west to Jones Avenue on the south. Here's the map you see right here before you, shown in green. It is three different parcels, but they're all part of the same master plan community in the same zoning case that was originally done back in two thousand and one. In this particular case, they are proposing for the general plan designation to go from residential one to two and two to three point five to two to three point five dwelling units per acre, ten to fifteen dwelling units an acre and commercial general plan designation as well. The staff does recommend approval of this request. The Estrella Village Planning Committee also recommended approval by an eight to zero vote. Here's what it currently looks like on the map. And this is what it would look like going forward with the darker brown designations being additional multifamily and the darker yellow signifying additional single-family density. And of course, the red is commercial. The Planning Commission also voted to approve this request by a nine to zero vote. The corresponding general or zoning case is to go from a mix of residential densities and commercial densities to R one-ten, R three, and R and C two, PCD, for that same acreage. It is a major amendment to the Sunset Farms PCD. It's reallocating some of those residential units in the commercial. This is what the master plan looks like, you know, as it gets re-done with some more multifamily wrapping those commercial corners if the council approves this particular request. It was also approved by the Estrella Village Planning Committee, eight to zero, and the Planning Commission, nine to zero. Staff does recommend approval of both items per the Planning Commission. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. The only person who has filled out a card for this is the applicant and I understand applicant is available to answer any questions. Do any council members have a question?
No.
All right, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing and move to Councilman Nowakowski. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, yes, I have a motion to approve for Planning Commission's approval, right?
Perfect.
I'll second it as long as we adopt the related resolution.
Thank you.
All right, roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Waring?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. I did not hear Councilman Waring. Waring? Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Item seventy-five is a related item. Councilman, and Councilman Nowakowski, do you have a motion on this item?
I sure do. Motion to approve Planning and Commission's approval action. That's it. To relieve it.
Second.
Second.
Mayor and Council? That one's just per the Planning Commission recommendation is good, correct?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
DeCiccio?
Yes.
Garcia?
What, what item is this? Sorry.
Rezoning of one hundred and Seventh Avenue.
Item seventy-five.
Okay, yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego? Passes nine zero.
We next move to item seventy-seven, off-premise signs along the western portion of State Route two oh-two. We will begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just going to forward here. Item seventy-seven is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to permit off-premise advertising along the western portion of the Loop two oh-two freeway from Interstate ten down to the north side of Estrella Drive. Under consideration was the whole stretch of the Loop two oh-two from the South Mountain Park area with the buffer all the way up to Interstate ten. This is a off-premise advertising, is most commonly called billboards for others watching, so they'll understand what we're talking about here. In this particular instance, you see the area outlined in red is the Loop two oh-two corridor as it goes around. The area that was initiated is that South Mountain Park boundary going north to Interstate ten. You can see on this particular map here, it shows the council districts and that same area going forward here of where the discussion was regarding this potential text amendment. Text amendments along the freeways are permitted as part of the zoning ordinance and regulated as a use, just like any other use on private property. In order to be allowed, you have to be on a permitted freeway that is specifically called out in the ordinance and allowed. In this particular instance, the Loop two oh-two freeway did not exist at the time the ordinance was last updated. And so it does not exist and this proposed text amendment would add to it to allow it to be located there if approved by the council. There are other regulations related to off-premise advertising. They have to be in A one or A two zoning district or within a planned unit development that is greater than twenty-one acre, or that is greater than twenty acres. They're also required to be within three hundred feet and oriented towards the freeway. They have a minimum spacing of a thousand feet from one off-premise structure to another. And they have to be a minimum of two thousand feet from Phoenix or South Mountain Preserve area per the existing ordinance requirements. In this case, this text amendment was voted to be denied by the Estrella Village Planning Committee. Levine Village Planning Committee voted to approve it per the staff recommendation with a modification. The Planning Commission voted to approve it with the language in the staff report, except to extend the area down from the Estrella Drive alignment down to the two thousand foot distance from the buffer of the South Mountain Preserve area. This map just shows what those designations were in terms of the Levine Village Planning Committee. Their recommendation to approve it was only from Lower Buckeye Road north up to Interstate ten. Of course, the Estrella one was to deny it in total. The Planning Commission did take the staff recommendation and extend it further south from the Estrella Drive alignment down to the two thousand foot buffer from South Mountain Park. The proposed language, as it would look in the ordinance, if the council adopts this, would be to add the Loop two oh-two freeway in here as a specifically permitted freeway to have off-premise advertising. This map right here shows you what that two thousand foot buffer is in blue from the South Mountain Preserve area. So you see the green is the Preserve designation. And so that's what, where the billboards will be permitted pursuant to the Planning Commission recommendation. Staff does recommend approval per the Planning Commission recommendation. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Alan?
Mayor, I do, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilwoman Stark.
Alan, can you go back to that slide that shows the buffer zone?
This one right here?
Yeah, yes. So the southern side, that's not actually in the city of Phoenix, or is it?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, the southern side is not. That is on the Gila River Indian Community in that particular instance, up through fifty, as you go across Fifty-first Avenue where you cross the freeway, on the south side of the freeway, you're entering the Gila River Indian Community land.
So actually, they don't have to abide by that buffer, correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Nowakowski?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion, a motion to approve per the Planning Commission's approval of all related ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Nowakowski and a second from Councilman DeCiccio. Councilmember Garcia?
You're on mute, Carlos.
Thank you. How was going on? That was the most eloquent statement I've ever made that you all just missed. Alan, can we go back and look at the maps? And can you explain why the Awatuki side does not have, is not included in this? And seeing the other map, the, definitely the two hun, the two thousand foot zone would seem to include parts of Phoenix on the south side of it. Why is that area not impacted?
Mayor, if I could just ask you to gavel the public hearing open because this item, we do have to have a public hearing on, so I think that's part of what we're doing here. If you want to just do that, then I'm happy to scroll to the maps that Councilman Garcia would like to discuss.
All right, I officially open the public hearing.
So, Councilman Garcia, is this the first map that you'd like to talk about in terms of the two oh-two corridor and why the portion in Awatuki was not included?
That's correct.
This particular text amendment was initiated by the Planning Commission at the request of Council District Seven. And as part of that initiation request, what was, was requested was only the portions of the Loop two oh-two freeway from the South Mountain Park boundary on the south going north up to Interstate ten. So that's all that was initiated and therefore all that was considered through the whole process.
And why wasn't it, if it's just from District Seven and District Six is kept out, why wasn't District Eight able to make their own determination like the other two districts?
Mayor, Councilman Garcia, in this particular case, you know, a council member can request the Planning Commission to initiate an item. That's part of the Planning Commission's purview to initiate items. But ultimately, it comes back before the council to make a decision. And that is the point where, you know, a council member can disagree with what the Planning Commission initiated and, you know, take whatever action they would like at that point.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing I wanted, if you can explain, please, would be what, because you know, this freeway just, you know, we just kicked it off. It's brand, brand new. The freeway we kicked off before that, the fifty-one, can you explain why there's no billboards or something similar wasn't done on the fifty-one going north?
Mayor, Councilman Garcia, the fifty-one freeway was much like the Loop two oh-two freeway when it first started. In particular, you know, the areas that it went through were more established residential, similar to, you know, Levine versus some of the areas within the two oh-two that are in the Estrella area that have more industrial zoning where boards are already permitted. There was no designation of a scenic corridor or anything else along the State Route fifty-one freeway. However, there was a very controversial billboard case that went forward and was approved north on the one oh-one, just where the fifty-one connects to the one oh-one freeway. And as an outgrowth of concern at council direction at that time, staff went forward and did a scenic corridor study evaluation and then ultimately a designation for the State Route fifty-one freeway from the Phoenix Mountain Preserve boundary north. And that also included the one oh-one going all the way over to Scottsdale Road and then over to the one oh-one limits within the city of Phoenix as we entered Glendale on the one oh-one.
So, so basically, all other recent freeways and most of them on the north side have, have not, do not have a similar text amendment?
Mayor, Councilman Garcia, the, the most recent freeway would be the Loop one oh-one freeway. And in that particular segment, there are billboards allowed on the west side within the Maryvale area and going into the city of Glendale. On the west side, they also allow billboards along that stretch of the one oh-one. And I believe that's a more recent freeway than the fifty-one freeway.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I had.
Councilwoman Pastor?
Alan, when was that, when was that request done with the Planning Commission?
The initiation of the Planning Commission for this particular item, it was done a number of, yeah, a number of months ago. I can get an exact date for you. I don't have it right here in front of me. But it was probably, I want to say, maybe eighteen months ago. It was prior to Councilman Garcia, you know, taking over as the representative in this district. That part I'm certain of, but we'll get you the date in just a second here.
No, I know. What I mean for the Awatuki not being included in this, in this conversation?
Right.
So you would say about?
That, that predated Councilman Garcia's time in District Eight. And.
Correct. So, okay, so in my understanding, if I'm understanding this correctly, District Seven made this recommendation to the Planning Commission. I'm just curious why District Six didn't make this recommendation? Or was it because you could not do that for your district?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, in this case, the request that was before the Planning Commission was based upon the letter, the request from Council District Seven to have that designation, have that text amendment initiated by the Planning Commission.
To, to, to not include District Seven? Or just to start, because what I'm understanding is what was included or the letter was to look at, I want to say, Estrella all the way up, which included seven and eight, and it did not include District Six? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilman Nowakowski?
So Mayor, when I first started about twelve years ago, it was brought to our attention that this freeway was voted back in nineteen eighty. And it took about thirty-five years to actually get the freeway. And it took about 35 years to actually get the freeway built. So we met with the business owners, we met with the community out there, all the different stakeholders. And we basically created a campaign to build that darn freeway. And it took a while. It took at least 10 years of advocating, pushing it through that we finally got the freeway. We had to bus people, we had a hearing from the federal government, and they used our convention center. And we actually had about couple thousand people bussed in from Levine to actually tell the federal government that we wanted this freeway to be built and that we needed their help. We also went to MAGA and basically let them know in ADOT that we want this freeway to be built, that this was the last portion of the 202 to be built, and that it would be great for traffic because the I-10 was getting overloaded. So saying all that, this has been a hard work to get this thing done. And I really want to thank all the stakeholders and all the community activists that really got this done and basically organized in at the federal level, at the state level, and at even at MAGA level, right? So we've been meeting, we've been meeting for the last 10 years. We've been talking about what type of businesses, what the wants are, what the needs are, and what the vision is. A lot of people talked about a hospital. So right now, we're in negotiations with a couple hospitals, and we already zoned an area for a hospital. We already approved the helicopter route for a hospital. So we got that done. So that was a hard lift, and we basically got that done. People wanted a movie theater. Because of COVID and everything, it kind of slowed the process down, but we are going to get a a movie theater. We're looking for a mall, we're looking for other amenities that the community wants. So we have a whole list that we're pushing for. One of the things that were brought up is that, once we get the mall, once we get all these retail and a tech corridor, that was another big thing, is that they didn't want to make sure that there wasn't just a bunch of warehouses, that we create quality jobs, jobs that individuals would want to have. So we created a tech corridor, we asked Chris Mackey and her team to go out there and and start recruiting. So saying all that, we basically heard from the community, and one of the concerns was is that they didn't want to have a cluster of billboards, a cluster of signs on a mall. They said that they have these vertical signs that says the different stores. So they wanted to make sure that it wasn't cluttered, that basically it looked uniform, and it blended into landscape of Estrella and also of Levine. So saying that, we, the best thing to do is we talked to our planning director at that time and says, well, we can create an ordinance. So that's exactly what we did. For the last couple of years, we've been having meetings out there in the community. After we met with the community, I had three robocalls, three different meetings, two at Caesar Chavez Library, one at Betty Fairfax. And basically, we heard from the communities, this is what they want. So we created an ordinance to make sure that they have, first of all, through the console, that they have to go through the two villages, and then they have to go through the Planning Commission to get anything passed. So there's all kinds of safeguards. This doesn't mean by tomorrow, if we vote this in, that there's going to be all kinds of billboards going on. No, not at all. There's a process. So the process is they have to get the okay from the city, and it goes through the village process, then it goes through the planning process, the the Planning Commissioners, and then it comes to us as a consul. So there's safeguards, and that's exactly what the people wanted, was some type of safeguard. They were concerned that there were some county islands that already had billboards on there. And these were not the type of billboards that they wanted. They wanted something to blend into the landscape of Levine and Estrella. So basically, that's what this whole thing's all about. They were afraid that they're going, we're going to start to annex some of the county properties. And annexing the county properties, we would have to grandfather some of these billboards that are on there. So this is what a result of a lot of hard work from our staff, a lot of hard work from District 7. And the reason for that District 7 is leading this, it's 95% in in District 7. The other thing is, it came from the residents along the freeway and the stakeholders along the freeway. District 6, I'm not sure if they got the same types of requests, but this is a request from the residents in my district. And that's why, just to answer some of those calls, Councilmember Garcia knew about this a year ago. And there's been meetings at the at the villages that there was a chance to actually protest it or to actually come in and give some criticism or comments on it, or actually to set up his own meetings for that 5% of the that of the amendment that affects his district. So I'm not really sure what what's going on right now. This is basically something that the community wants to put some safeguards in and making sure that their community is protected. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Garcia.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Councilman Noakowski, I'm sorry, Matt, to ask you some of these questions publicly, because I tried calling you and I received a call back the last couple of days. I really want to know, yeah, what was the decision? Who were the people that were asking you? Because it seems like the VPCs denied it. And all the calls we're getting is is people just want to participate. And so I'm wondering, all those things you all did to bring the freeway, and yourself, the mayor, previous council folks, it's obviously named Ed Pastor for a reason. Ed Pastor did a lot for this freeway. So a lot of people did amazing things. And and the things you're talking about with the hospital, the movie theater, the tech corridor, are dreams that everybody has, and we want to make sure happen. And so because that took 30 years, because all that work is there, and we want to make sure that all those dreams come true, I'm shocked that this moved forward. And and so you said two contradictory things. One is you started before I was here. And then you said that community asked you. And so I'd want to know what what those processes were like, were those meetings or robocalls just about the billboards? And then also, who are some of the folks? Because I know some of the landowners have called us, but the majority of the community in Levine and Estrella, which we don't represent, so told them to to kind of go talk to you, they don't want this to move forward. And we're going to hear from some of the folks right now. But just if you can explain again your rationale of why not including the south part? Or was there a conversation with with District 6? I would understand that. And even, I don't know the percentages, but even if it's 5%, I would expect the courtesy of of a conversation around this. And so, yeah, just some of those questions about how it came about, how did you decide not to include the entire loop? And then what what was the community process to speak directly about the billboards? Because that's where folks are telling us, they found out at the VPCs two months ago, and the VPCs responded by voting, both VPCs denying it.
Mayor, I'd like to answer my side, if that's okay, before Michael does.
Councilman Noakowski, I think that would be fine.
Hey, no problem.
Mayor, and it cracks me up, because it's always starting to sound a little nefarious here, but there's something weird that went on. Well, let me tell you what really went on, because I was around back in the 90s and Felder was here too. So I'll give you a little history on this. The one part of it deals with why was District 6 not in it? Oh, my gosh, why weren't they in there? Because there's no available land. If you want to put it in one of the parks, okay, hey, I'm all for it. If you want to include, if this gets you guys to vote for this reasonable plan here, I will include District 6. I don't think you can legally do it today, but I'll actually ask for the Planning Commission to do it. But let me tell you where you're going to put it. You're going to put it in a park. It's not going to go in open space, because you can't designate it an open space. It can only be an A1 type of zoning. So there is no A1 on the southern side. All you have to do is look at a map and look at a zoning map, and I can tell you exactly why. And if you look at the development that's occurred out there as well, all of that's developed out. There's just no land out there. So if you want to try and find a way to do it, if you want to try and rezone something A1, hey, I'm all for it. I'm not an anti-billboard guy at all. So if you want to do that, if you want to put it in one of our preserves, go ahead. If you want to try and put it in the open space, you're going to have to rezone that as A1. You know, I'll fight it, but, you know, go ahead, go for it. But if you want to include District 6 into this proposal, I'd be happy to do that. The reason it was not included is because there's no spot out there to do that. If someone can drive out there and find one spot, I would like to see that. Now, let's talk about the history of the freeway, because I was around back in the 90s and so was Felder as to why this freeway was even built and why it would do that area. There was a huge fight between where the freeway alignment was going to go. It want, you know, the powers that be wanted to go through Tolleson, but Frank Fairbanks at the time, and is what, you know, is, you know, is strong wisdom, knew that if it went through 59th Avenue, it was going to bring in the economic development that you wanted to see. If it followed the other alignments, the city of Phoenix was going to get screwed out of any economic development. It was going to get screwed out of any hospitals that were going to come in there. You were going to get nothing more than a bedroom community that you see in some places in the city, including parts of mine. So if you wanted to see the type of economic development, you have to do some of these things. A part of economic development means you have to let people know that you're there. Either it's your monument signs or billboard signs, that does happen, and it happens on the freeway. So that's the short history. I mean, I can go through this and spend the next hour and a half covering what occurred and why that letter was written to the Maricopa Association of Governments insisting it on the 59th Avenue alignment. And along that time, back in the 1990s, that's when a lot of this started taking hold. But if people want to add this, just to get people to vote for this reasonable proposal, then do it. Add it, add it to, add it to the deal. I'm all good with that. There's nothing you can put in there anyway, so it doesn't matter. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll now turn to Councilman Noakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor, basically, for the last two years and three years, we've been meeting with the community, and these are some of the concerns that were brought out. We had a committee that was looking for retail, and we still have people looking for restaurants to come into that area. So to say that we haven't had their outreach, we actually had three meetings that wasn't geared just towards the billboard. It was geared to what she liked to see, and what are your concerns, what's your visions, what's your needs for the 202 freeway? That was a robocall. I actually did three robocalls. And we basically had the meetings at the Caesar Chavez Library and at Betty Fairfax. So basically, I don't know what to tell you, Carlos, but we've been meeting and and organizing the community for 10 years and these types of meetings for the last three years. So, but we heard from the community, and there's there's individuals. There's individuals that live out in Levine that are very angry and mad, and they don't want a freeway. They don't want any multifamily housing. They would like Levine to stay the way it is with ranch and agricultural. But what we've seen in the studies, and there's been studies through ADOT and through this whole process of the corridor, and that it's going to change, that it's going to be a suburb, that it's going to have housing, master planning coming in, and that the way that Levine looks like is going to change. And it's going to change the face of Levine, it's going to change the face of Estrella. So one of the things that Estrella was talking about is warehouses, that they really wanted to make sure that the warehouse, it wasn't just a bunch of warehouses along the along the freeway. So that's when we came up with the tech corridor, that they wanted to make sure that there were some high end jobs. So we asked them, like, what would you like to see done? And basically, they turned around and said, well, Chandler did. And we said, wow, what a great opportunity. We have Chris Mackey that actually worked and helped out with Chandler in in creating that tech corridor, now working for the city of Phoenix. So we asked, Chris, can you make your magic happen again in the Levine area? She said, absolutely. So we have some some deals already cut and some possibilities already lined up. And hopefully, that they're all going to come through. So they're not dreams anymore. It's actually going to happen. We're actually going to have a movie theater, we're actually going to have a hospital out there. We're actually going to have some techs, businesses that are going to create that corridor. And it's really the hard work, the meetings after meetings after meetings of of individuals. And yes, not everybody's happy, and not everybody's going to be happy because we're changing a community that used to be basically an agricultural community to look more like a suburb. And, you know, I feel bad that we can't find a happy medium. But hopefully, we can keep some of those acre lands out there, especially south of Dobbins. And that's one of the things, when I represented that area, that we looked at is creating acre land, acre lots south of Dobbins. So those are just some of the things and just some of the answers. And I'm not sure if there's anything else.
Thank you. I will go to Councilwoman Stark and then Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. So going back to the map, I'm sorry, Ellen, but the one that shows the 202 going all the way around from I-10. So all the land south of the 202 is in the Gila River Indian Community. And they certainly could put up billboards. I think they have billboards on I-10 right now. So there could possibly, and I know you can't speak for the the tribal community, but they could possibly put up signs. They could make deals with the billboard companies, and they could put up signs. And furthermore, we have to go through a rezoning, right? So there's nothing zoned right now on the 202 that would allow a billboard. Would they not have to go through a rezoning process where you would have the public input?
Mayor Councilwoman Stark, that is true within the Levine Village area. They don't have A1 or A2 zoning or PUDs that are greater than 20 acres that would allow for billboards. But within the Estrella Village, those, there are a number of properties that are already zoned A1 and A2 and have billboards facing the arterial streets there that could be made to face the the freeway because the zoning's in place.
Okay. And again, we can't speak for the Gila River Indian Community, but they they do have signs on I-10, and they simply could put signs along the 202 if they wanted to. And so I don't, you don't have to answer that. I think that that's something we need to recognize. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, Ellen, so with the rationale that Councilman DeCiccio used about no current zoning there would be, would allow billboard anyways, the same would apply to Levine, correct?
Mayor, Councilman Garcia, in this particular instance, I think the, what Councilman DeCiccio is referencing is that that area is largely built out under the existing zoning where in the Levine area, there is a lot of land that is not yet built. But it does not have the zoning to allow it to happen.
Okay, so it still doesn't have, all right. No, thank you. I I think at this point, I want to hear from the community. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any council member comments before we, Councilwoman Pastor?
This, I have many comments, but this one in particular, I think we need to understand and be respectful regarding the Gila River Nation. As as Sal has given us a history lesson, it was very difficult to get the the 202 freeway because there was a lot of contention about it going on sacred land. And it took a very long time to get it to the place that where it is and for the elders to bless what was going to happen. And so anything, if you, if you know, have any knowledge of what happens on native land, there's a whole process that goes into play. And and in the end, it's the elders who bless if something's going to happen or not. And it goes to the Mother Earth, and there are spiritual ceremonies and traditions that then determine if it's something's going to happen within their land. And so it's not as easy as it would be in our zoning case or on our side of the land. There's a different way of how they handle their land and how it is, it is looked upon and what is being placed upon their on their property. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Councilman Noakowski.
And Mayor, just to follow, Councilmember Pastor, that's very true. They had an environmental study for that area, and we had to create habitat crossing. So basically, the freeway was actually lifted to make sure that the habitats were able to go off the reservation to the mountain and vice versa, from the mountain to the reservation. Also, there were some protections there of the mountain itself, that there can be houses and other things built along there. And that basically, that would be the, that so-called corridor that was protected. And that basically that would be the, that so-called corridor that was protected or scenic corridor. We have mountains on both sides instead of agriculture on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to go ahead and go to public comment now. We'll begin with Nick Wood, followed by Daniel Penn.
Mayor, members of the council, Nick Woods, Snell and Wilmer, One Arizona Center. And I represent a number of the property owners along the 202 corridor, including the Lyons family and the Smith family and the Frey family, Williams, Kitchell, Vanderway, a lot of people for whom I did most of the zoning along the freeway, including the, the core area and Tierra Montana and Dove Ranch and others back in the early 2000s, 2004, 2005, 2006. The families are not asking for an absolute right or even permission to place a billboard sign on any of their properties. All they're asking the councils to do is give them a vehicle to ask the council to approve one sometime in the future. Right now, the way that the ordinance is, is structured is they're not even allowed to ask permission for a sign. I find that unfair and I find that creating a, a situation where they're not treated the same way as other property owners along other freeways within the city of Phoenix, because the police powers that the city has in establishing land use controls is significant. I think any landowner should have the right to at least ask for his owning change. That doesn't mean that the council should give up their legislative prerogative. You have the ability as a council to make decisions with respect to any zoning case. And anytime a, an application for any zoning comes before you, including a sign, as Councilman Noakowski mentioned, it goes through the village planning committees, then it goes to the planning commission and then it comes to city council. So you make a policy decision on whether or not there should be, in this case, a sign located anywhere in Levine or in Australia, in Australia. And if the decision is no, well then the decision's no. But all they're asking for is an opportunity to come before you or have anyone who develops their property to just simply ask for a sign. This does not give them the right. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Branscombe, followed by Wes Lyons.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Robert Branscombe. I am the chairman for the Levine Village Planning Committee. I'm at 8908 South 55th Lane in Levine. We did hear this text amendment a few months back. There was plenty of discussion and concern about it. Some of the constituents that attended this meeting has special concerns about the dark skies and want to make sure that they can keep the view of the beautiful freeway intact. In the end, we did vote eight, nothing to modify the billboards on the freeway to extend it only down to Lower Buckeye, to take in consideration also that neighborhood there who fought hard to get a bridge to go over to the community. We are well aware that there are no properties that presently allow billboards to be on the stretch of the freeway there in Levine. We do have one upcoming property right now, that PUD, that we did pass, that could be allowed to have that. Also, on the west side, there is county property still there that has a billboard existing there and could put more billboards as such. I'm here just tonight to represent the committee's decision and to answer any questions regarding why we made that decision and to be available for, to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Mr. Lyons, followed by Lisa Perez. I'm sorry, we have a question. Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Robert, I'm just, and thank you for being here and thank you for your work on the village planning committee. Wondering if you had had this conversation previous to it coming to your village? Had you already been considering this or had you had previous conversations about billboards on the 202?
I did have some conversations with Nick Woods. I met with and talked with him twice about that. I knew that it was coming to the village. I also heard that it was coming to Estrella Village and spoke with the chairman over there, Lisa. But those are the only times that I really heard about it before, you know, we were presented with it at our meetings.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you for, for showing up and representing the village.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons, followed by Lisa Perez.
Mayor, I have a question for, for the last person that spoke.
Wonderful. Robert, would you entertain an additional question?
Well. Hey, Robert, this is Michael. How's it going?
Good, how you doing, Councilman?
Good, good. So for the last 10 years, Robert, how many of the 202 freeway meetings have you attended? Where we've talked about the designs, the, basically the billboards and all that kind of stuff?
I wouldn't, I couldn't say 10 years, but as long as I've been on the village, it's been going a five, six years. I've had some interaction with and some, been privy to some designs and some considerations of what the 202 was going to bring.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I certainly have seen Robert at just about every event in Levine, including recently the, an event for Cesar Chavez Community Center groundbreaking. Okay. Ever patient, now Mr. Lyons.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, thank you for all your hard work. I'm here in my office in Levine and I'm actually looking at the item at hand as we speak. This might be the first time in Phoenix history that that's happened. But I'm actually looking at the beautiful freeway as we speak. I've lived out here since 2001. My grandfather bought property out here along the freeway when Eisenhower was president. And I have personally met with Congressman Pastor and Congressman Gallego. I've also met with the city, the landowners in the Levine community for many years. I'm very much in favor of this item and mostly because of the technology that it will bring. Well, I have heard of this freeway my whole life and now that it's finally here, I would love to put the icing on the cake and finally give it its final blessing to give it the adequate technology that, that Levine needs. We're always getting the, the bottom of the barrel. We, we never have the right, the right technology when it comes to phones or television or internet connection. We're always kind of left out and I would love for us to get that adequate technology. And yes, the, the Hila River Indian Community has already built several billboards down there around the area where the 202 meets the I-10 on the way to Tucson. If you drive down there, they have them about every 50 yards for about a quarter of a mile. I, I mean, I don't know, I might be exaggerating, but it seems like that many. So I would love to help out this tech corridor that Christine Mackey wants so much. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to take advantage of this and bring this thing all the way home. And if there's no other questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Seeing none, I will turn to Chairwoman Perez.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity for speaking with you tonight. As the mayor said, I serve as the chair of the Estrella Village Community, VPC. As Chairman Branscombe and others have mentioned, the Estrella Village community did deny this and we did support what the Levine Village did, which is approve it to the Lower Buckeye area as we do have the designated zoning of A1, A2 in that area as it's mostly industrial. I do want to acknowledge all the work that Councilwoman Noakowski has said and others have said of what they've done to bring this freeway here. In fact, it was the reason that I was able to move from North Scottsdale to this area in 2013. I can say with all sincerity that I have never been invited to any other meeting regarding planning of the 202 or any other meetings regarding what's happening in this area. And I think that is something to be said. As a village planning chair since 2016, I should have been invited to some meetings and I have not. But I'm back to the question of, while we want growth and positive stuff to happen on this Loop 202, I'm not sure what billboards does for that. This question is about billboards and I'm not sure what billboards does to enhance the growth and the building of other things on this freeway. Now, while I can admit as a rational person that billboards belong on the 202, I think a corridor study like they did for the SR 51 and the Loop 101 is warranted. We do have, as Councilwoman Pastor graciously said, the respect of our Hila River Indian community and ourselves. To respect the area, we have the South Mountain Park, which is the largest urban park in the entire United States of America. It is warranted for a corridor study. I think that is warranted. I don't think that's beyond the rationale to ask for that. I don't think that two village meetings is worthy of public outreach in this area and I think that is a simple ask. I respect the landowners and they should be able to do what they want to with their land, absolutely. But I ask that we take a look at the corridor study. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Chairwoman. A question? You have worked in economic development and have worked on the South Mountain Tech Corridor. Do you think billboards would be helpful if we wanted to get, bring those high wage jobs to this area of our community?
Mayor and council members, I'm not sure. I, I don't know what billboards bring. We don't have no editorial control right now over those, so it depends. If the city of Phoenix is wants to put a billboard up to advertise vacant land, et cetera, that might be one thing. I'm not sure how other billboards do help that. Again, I, I don't know. I'm just not sure how that is a asset versus a negative.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, I believe that is everyone online for this agendized item?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Having, having had this conversation and, and again, being here for the last year and not being able to, to be in this conversation as much as I would like to, I think two things stuck with me. One was definitely the difference between Estrella and Levine and how Levine is a lot more like the 51 and the south part of the 202 towards Awatuki. And then the other one is just the community input. Even the two VPC leaders that were on today who were not talked to or did not have conversations about this before, before the, the text amendment was scheduled to come to them really concerns me because if those two folks who are probably the two most attuned to what's happening in development in the area, representing community, then did not have this information or warrant involved in conversations, I don't know how we expect ordinary folks to have also known this was happening. And so I hope my colleagues can support and I'd like to make a substitute motion. I want to motion to approve item 77 with the southern boundary being Baseline Road so that no off-premise advertising is located south of Baseline Road. In addition, I would like staff to study the area south of Baseline Road up to South Mountain Park for designation as a scenic corridor similar to the SR 51 freeway north of the Phoenix Mountain Preserves.
Second. Thank you. We have a substitute motion and a second?
I.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I have some comments about this. As you know, if anything, if anyone that saw the hard work and the sacrifice that went into seeing this freeway built would have been me and my family and the long nights and conversations on the phone for appropriations for this freeway with all government agencies and with different influencers to make it happen and it's taken this long for it to get here. And as Wes said, I know the Lyons family very well and Wes was there with me when I first ran for office and have a great appreciation for them and his family. What I also would like to say is that Estrella and Levine are very unique and it's a unique environment just like we have a unique community as, as historic communities. And there is some sense of, of lack of community outreach. I do believe there could come, we could come to a compromise and get to a point of where billboards could be placed. I'm going to use the words of Nick Wood that he had just stated right now. And I am going to state, the same way the property owners represented by Nick Woods are asking for a process for council to consider billboards for consideration, the greater community is asking for a process to the council to review a scenic corridor for the policy of this area. And so I believe that there are two parties that are asking really for the same thing where there can be a compromise. It has been stated about the tech corridor. The tech corridor was adopted in 2015. And as I have been sitting as the chairwoman of the Workforce and Economic Development Subcommittee, I've been meeting with those tech companies and, and trying to recruit those high wage businesses and jobs over there by the Loop 202. What they would like to see or what they have expressed is that by being near the freeway, they would have access to have their own name recognition and their own branding being viewed as someone is driving on the freeway. And drawing these businesses is important for the future of Phoenix, in, in particular in that area. As Wes has stated, you know, that's an area that is forgotten because it's so far west and a little isolated. So I believe there's a, a way of maybe allowing billboards, but really limiting on how many billboards or billboards being in that area. But until we have that conversation, it, it's, it's difficult. And I believe right now we have to have, put a pause and then have a conversation on this. So those are my statements. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. When we had our meeting on the 202 Ed Pastor Freeway Corridor and Economic Development, we did talk about some of these issues. And at the time, I did say I had concerns about how the billboards would interact with our, our vision for the tech corridor and as well the entry to the South Mountain Park. But I think Councilmember Garcia's motion is a responsible one, so I will be supporting it. Roll call.
DeCiccio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Noakowski?
No.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
No.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
No.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
It fails four to five.
Substitute motion has failed, so we next go to Councilman Noakowski's original motion.
And Mayor, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that people understand that there was an environmental study right there where the Indian Reservation, right on the curve where 51st Avenue is and that there was some ordinances put in there that we're not allowed to build certain things there that we have to keep the habitat corridor is open and we can't disturb them in any way and we need to keep the views of the mountain just undisturbed. There was some housing that was built out there that was already zoned for that. So we can't really do anything about that, but the rest of it is preserved. So, you know, I just want to make sure that people know that we're not thinking about going on. that we're not thinking about going on to the reservation or going on to the mountain, that we're basically 3,000, 2,000 feet away from that. The other thing too is that this is a safeguard. This is basically an ordinance to make sure that there's a process that the council gets to hear, that it has to go through the two villages and it has to go through the commissioners, the planning commissioners to get approved. So there's four different stops that any developer, any PUD or whatever they want to create is going to have to go through. The other thing is that there's a lot of agricultural properties in the Levine area that's shared by majority is in District 7, but also shared with District 8, that agricultural property isn't going to be agricultural property for much longer. There's a lot of master communities that are coming into us and asking to rezone that area. I believe. And if anybody else doesn't believe that, it's going to be houses built there and not, not an agricultural properties are going to go away. That's what's going to happen. That's the vision. I believe we're going to have a hospital. We have a movie theater and we're going to have a tech corridor. So all the things that people have fought for and wanted. And absolutely in 2015, at the state of the union, at the state of the city, Mayor Greg Stanton announced the tech corridor. We were so happy to basically tell him what was going on. Chris Mack and myself informed him. He said, can I use it for my state of the city? Absolutely. So that was even announced out there. So just wanted to give some history of that. So thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing. I apologize, I should have done that before the first vote. But City Clerk, are we okay with that?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Then we will then move to roll call on Councilman Nowakowski's motion.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Yes, Ma'am.
Can I make a friendly amendment to your motion?
Would you like to listen to it? Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So move to approve item 77 with the southern boundary being Estrella Road and that off premise advertising is only accessory to permitted freeway pilot signage and located on the same sign structure between Estrella and Baseline Roads. This would allow for limited off premises signs that minimizes sign blight because the structures are combined to advertise on site goods and off premise digital signage. The ordinance spacing for off premises advertising of 1,000 feet would have to still be met. So what it does, it allows combined digital billboards and on premises signage and should result in less visual sign clutter.
Correct. And it still has to go through four different meetings to be approved, right?
Correct.
All right. So there's safeguards in there.
May I ask a question?
Right.
May I ask a question on that?
Councilman DeCiccio.
It's only that it seems just very complicated to do at the last minute like this after something's been through an entire process. My preference, because I'm the second, is that I would prefer just to move this thing forward the way it is. And if we need to, we can always reconsider it later and/or add it on later. But from my end, it's way too complicated to follow, for me at least, because I'm probably not the smartest guy. But, you know, I would just like to just get this thing done. It's been going on for so many years. And I don't understand all the nuances of this friendly motion. So from my end, I would just like to move this thing forward. And then if we need to, we can reconsider it or add it on later. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I agree with you, Sal. We'll just keep it the way it is.
Alan, can you explain what I was trying to request? Because I believe it's the very similar language to Councilman Nowakowski's motion.
So Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, the, I believe what you're trying to get at is that all properties that are adjacent to a freeway are permitted freeway pylon signs. You think about driving down the freeway. You see really tall signs that are adjacent to freeways. Those are called freeway pylon signs. And so because of the heavy traffic volume with freeways, they're permitted to have a bigger sign that is as part of that. That signage typically is just focused on on premise signage only for, you know, the McDonald's, sprouts, whatever is on the property. It doesn't allow off premise. I think what you're seeking to do is try and combine those so that you don't have these big tall freeway, you know, pile signs along with the billboard signs to try and combine them into, you know, one sign structure. So that you would have a digital board face and then the other signs, you know, hanging from that for on premise signs.
So I was trying to basically, Michael, with the way it's set up is not have a lot of visual sign clutter as you're driving down the freeway.
So Laura, I think there's some confusion that I believe that the way we have it will create, would stop that cluttering. And that's exactly what the purpose is. And it allows the village, allows the planning commissioners, and allows the council member of that district to actually make those decisions and has input from the residents through that process. So I'm going to stick with our original motion. Thank you.
Can you read your original motion to me?
Can you read the whole? I'm sorry, I don't have the whole planning commission's.
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, we're pulling up the language here for the PowerPoint. And so the recommendation made by Councilman Nowakowski was to approve it per the Planning Commission recommendation, which takes the line allowing signage down to the 2,000 foot distance from South Mountain Park, which is what's shown here in this blue map. So you would be able to have off premise signs from where the blue line crosses the freeway, which is about the 51st Avenue alignment going north up to the I-10. Yes, and also adopt the related ordinance.
Okay, so Alan, I just want to understand because that's the, that's the motion. What is the difference in the motion that the second that I was making? I was trying to, what I was trying to do was eliminate, was doing the spacing of advertising of 1,000 feet and not cluttering the area of billboards. So would that motion do that?
So Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, the motion that I think you were trying to get to is addressing signage that would be visible as you are driving along the freeway corridor in total. So that's on premise and off premise advertising and trying to combine them into one or a couple of sign structures, depending on the property size and all that, that would be analyzed through the zoning process. But ultimately, there would be less sign structures in your proposal because there would be a combination. What this current motion does is, does not address the on premise signage at all. It is just solely focused on allowing the allowance for off premise signs to be located. It still will have a thousand foot spacing requirement because that's what's required for off premise. And it doesn't address the on premise freeway pylon, pile signs at all.
Okay. So that's fine. I'm fine with the way the motion is. My next question to you, Alan, is what is the next process then to be able then to add that language in? Would it go through the village? Would it go through the planning commission? What would it go through?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, is your question to add the language about trying to combine the on premise signs with the off premise signs?
Yes.
Well, that would be a separate text amendment that would have to be evaluated and then, and processed through, back through the process.
Okay. So then we could do it back through the process. We could make it happen through, instead of if it's not accepted here, then that's the alternate route.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that would be something that, you know, could be considered by the council on a future action. It sounds like as part of this action, you know, there isn't support for that. So staff would have to work with, you know, the council members and others in the community on how that would come forward timing wise. Because we do, you know, we have limited staff to process all of these, you know, amendments. And so it would be something that would take some time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will now go to roll call on Councilman Nowakowski's motion.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Garcia.
No.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
No.
Gallego.
No.
Passes six, three.
Thank you. At council meetings, we often take a break at the three hour mark, which we have now passed. But to give everyone a moment, we are going to take a 10 minute break right now and then reconvene at 6:05. Welcome back to our city council meeting. Thank you for joining us today and thank you for your patience, especially those who have been waiting our entire council meeting. We will now move to item 78, which is an item at the northeast corner of 59th Avenue and Dobbins Road in District 8. If it's okay with Councilmember Garcia, I'll begin with a staff report. All right. Introduce our planning director, Alan Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This next one is a planning hearing officer request to modify stipulations for the northeast corner of 59th Avenue and Dobbins Road. It's shown, outlined in green on the aerial screen here. In this case, it's not a rezoning application. It's modifying stipulations where the zoning was previously approved back in 2002 by the council. The proposal was to modify stipulation number one regarding general conformance for the site plan, planning hearing officer review of the site plan and elevations, and deletion of stipulation 16 regarding a shade protected walkway along the building walls, canopy height for the gas station that was shown in the original zoning and is still part of the current proposal, as well as presentation of their development plans to Levine Village Planning Committee and some technical corrections to the name of the department that's administering the stipulations. The Levine Village Planning Committee did vote to deny the request by a 6 to 2 vote. The planning hearing officer voted to denial as filed and approved with modifications and additional stipulations. The planning commission did vote to approve it per the planning hearing officer recommendation with an additional stipulation. That's just the zoning map to show that area where there's single family residential to the north and east of the site. This is the proposed latest site plan. The applicant did submit a letter on Friday with some revised stipulations and a revised site plan based upon further negotiations with the neighborhood to get some support for the project as part of that. So in that instance, what came out earlier today is a memo with some revised stipulations that reflect that agreement from the neighborhood and the applicant. So staff does recommend approval per the memo from myself dated today's date with the new stipulations and revised site plan and then adoption of the related ordinance as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I will go ahead and open the public hearing for this item. We will, do council members have any comments before we hear from members of the public? Okay. We will begin with Kathy Weigle, followed by Phil Hertel.
Hello, this is Kathy.
Hello, we can hear you. Thank you for your patience today.
I did submit slides. I was told there would be a presentation. Is that available or do you want verbal comments only?
I am sorry, we did talk to both sides ahead of time and each side will have opportunity for a presentation. So we will begin. We'll have up to 10 minutes on each side for presentations. So we'll begin with those slides. Does our staff have them available?
Yes, they should. They should. Perfect. Okay. So I'll just briefly introduce myself and my thanks to Mayor Gallego and city council for allowing us to speak on this agenda item. I'm Dr. Kathy Weigle. I'm a resident of Paseo Point neighborhood and a member of the HOA board. If you want to go ahead and scroll to the next slide there. Just to orient you, this is the site plan. Paseo Point is to the east or the right of the site plan. And it is the only neighborhood surrounding the site right now. The rest is all vacant area. Go to the next one, please. I do want to point out as we begin that according to the applicant, the only identified user right now on the site plan is the gas station at the southwest corner. They've explained to us that none of the other pads are in active discussions at this point and they really don't know what's going to be developed there. So given that we've, we're taking a broader view and we're trying to look at the site plan to ensure that its future as a commercial development is compatible with the single family residences and their needs as well as for the vision of Levine. So if you could go to the next one. We have had some follow up discussions with the applicant and your staff member accurately represented that there is a memo with the items on which we've reached consensus, including the restoration for the LVPC review and comment, the additional notification to Paseo Point residents, contents and priority build of the landscape buffer, as well as the lighting, review of the lighting site plan and lighting limitations and the removal of the C2 use references for the site plan. So all of those have been agreed to. We, go ahead, please. We do have some outstanding concerns that we'd like to share with council. One is the single defined user on the site plan. The setbacks, we believe, are still insufficient. And the neighborhood has asked that we share our position on the fast food drive through and any future C2 uses that might be presented going forward. Next, please. So the point we want to make about the single user is that since there's only one identified use on the site plan, that the community is very concerned that approval of this site plan effectively gives a blanket approval to development that may not bear any resemblance to the final build. Once that approval is given, the formal community recourse is limited. We've already been advised that the configuration of the pads, the buildings and the uses may change significantly. And the applicant claims that they're not really able to come to agreement on the specific layout because of that, which we understand if they don't know what they're going to build there. Next, please. So for that reason, the community has to look at what's defined in the form of stipulations attached to the land through zoning to ensure some guidance regarding placement of building and buffer zones. And we want to point out to you that all of the residential homes along the east side of the property are two story homes. So with that in mind, we've explored some models and examples of how we might handle this based on other areas. Next. During our discussions, we learned that if a commercial building of three stories were to be built next to a residential area, there would be 50 feet of building setback required between the commercial structure and the residential property. So we appreciate that the city recognizes that more space is needed when you have those larger buildings. On the next slide, you can see that the issue is with the fact that the current situation has residential property that's already two stories. So if a commercial building is built, it only has to be 25 feet away from the property. There's still a two story building involved, but the scenario results in loss of privacy, diminished enjoyment of the rear yard amenities, and very likely a reduction in the residential property values for those homes. And as you can see, if you look back at that site plan, that the rear yards of these homes are very, very small. They're not more than 20 feet deep. So effectively, an adjacent commercial building is right outside the back door. Now, we did discuss several solutions for this. Now, we did discuss several solutions for this dilemma with the applicant. Two main options emerged, the possibility of stipulating a 50 foot building setback for any construction along that east property line. And the other possible option is to extend the landscape buffer to 30 feet. So if you take a look at our diagram, you can kind of see how these would look. The advantage of the 50 foot building setback option is that it would be consistent with the current treatment of two story properties with the city. It would be effective in the situation where the users are unknown. It preserves the full land area for commercial use. It does not eat into any of their square footage for parking or anything like that. And the applicant would then, as they've already agreed, follow up with the neighborhood to talk about the specific site plan and the best positioning of exactly what is behind or in front of the building. The next slide shows the possibility with the increased landscape buffer. So if there is not interest in the setback, we could simply increase that landscape buffer to compensate for potentially building directly behind the property. Next. It's important to note that we looked for examples throughout the city of Phoenix, as well as requested examples from the applicant, and we found that in nearly every instance, there was some additional feature separating the two story structures from the commercial property. Sometimes green belts, canals, playgrounds, in the case of the daycare, driveways, any of these things that provided additional distance. We're very willing to discuss the final configuration at the time of the design review, but in itself, that's insufficient protection for the community because there's no formal obligation to address that setback distance at that time. I'll touch briefly on the other two items that the community wanted me to share. Although the site plan is not final, there was a lot of concern about the drive through within 300 feet. This would be a drive through fast food restaurant if it bears out in the site plan. We understand that that requires a use permit or variance to build that close, and the community wishes council to know that they oppose the location of a fast food drive through that close to the residential property. Next. One possible solution there, we we looked at the scale on the site plan. It's actually showing about 140 feet, which is a significant variation from the required distance. The obvious solution here is that since the site plan is still in its draft phase and none of those those plots are committed to, to simply reconfigure the layout of the parcels since only the service station right now is a committed use. The last comment that I was asked to share on behalf of the community is about the original opposition to the gas station. Since concerns about the gas station and the C2 use were raised in many of the prior sessions and are included in the documents, we do want to clarify the neighborhood position. The C2 has been removed from the submitted site plan as we asked, and the neighbors do wish to note that they would be opposed to any reconsideration of C2 uses. I was also asked at the LCRD meeting last night if our work with the applicant on the stipulations means that the community is now on board with building a gas station. And respectfully, I must admit that the community still opposes the station in that location, but we recognize that it's important to collaborate with the applicant in the site overall so that we can partner to achieve a commercial space that reflects the needs, desires, and character of the community. That said, the the staff pointed out that the neighborhood did express opposition to the gas station as well as the original C2 auto repair. That was on the first plan that was submitted. The neighbors spoke up very strongly at LVPC, also at the PHO hearing, the zoning commission, and when the council appeal was done, requesting a three force petition. Unfortunately, we didn't get that because of area. As you can see, it's all farmland and empty property on three sides. But if you look at the petition, you'll see that the neighbors did make their opinion known. I'll also add that the residents did their due diligence when they purchased their homes and bought into the concept of the Village Core Plan and the development according to the Levine Character Plan shown on the City of Phoenix website. So we do remain concerned that we continue to align with those principles and that we do not adopt piecemeal development strategies. So in closing, we would like to request that you deny the original site plan submitted and stipulations and instead include the stipulation updates as we agreed to between the applicant and the neighborhood. And we'd also like to request an additional setback for building and or landscape as council deems appropriate. Further, as I mentioned, we would like for you to continue to consider the appropriate use of the the gas station user at this location. There were a number of alternative sites recommended and that going forward, we hope to continue to ensure and incentivize additional neighborhood engagement with the current constituents when determining the commercial options backing the residential property, particularly in cases like this where there is a significant lifetime between the initial zoning action and the actual development. In this case, there was 18 years between the approval of the zoning and the homes were not even built at that time. So with that, I want to tell you that we all do appreciate the efforts of our planning committee staff, your City of Phoenix staff, and council themselves to ensure that this property and the Levine area in general is developed and grows in a way that showcases its distinctive place as part of the City of Phoenix, and we thank you all for your time and service to the community.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your presentation and the time you've put into this. We will next go to the applicant. I believe Paul Gilbert will be first to speak.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's been a long afternoon. I'd like to just say that you need to understand that this property is already zoned. The uses are already allowed. And so there's been, we spent so much time trying to work with the neighbors on their opposition to the gas station, they have finally realized that that's allowed as a matter of right. And we're not going to change that gas station use. We have a user, it looks like Chevron is ready to go. We don't have the escrow closed yet, but there will be a gas station there that's allowed. That's what the zoning allows. You also need to take into account the posture of the recommending bodies that are charged with giving you a recommendation. We had been to the PHO. The PHO recommends approval. The planning staff recommends approval. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. So the only one that didn't was the village, and the village back then opposed it because they opposed the gas station, which wasn't relevant to the site plan and PHO modifications. So we're here with a positive, solid staff recommendation for approval, but we didn't take that for granted. We also, and frankly, at the admonition of the planning commission, met with the representatives of the surrounding neighborhood, Dr. Weigle and her neighbors. We had four very long but delightful meetings, and let me just tell you some of the things we agreed to. This isn't something where we're ramming something down the neighbor's throats. First of all, we agreed to specific landscaping standards along their border. We let them pick the trees. We let them pick the watering system. We let them pick the spacing. We gave the specific dimensions for the tree staggering. They wanted a very thorough multiple review process. We agreed to all of that. It's all in the stipulations. So they get to review this every step of the way, even when we apply for a comprehensive site plan amendment. If we do, we have to notify them and make sure that we notify a specific list at their request. They also wanted us to put in the landscaping early, even though we are only building one section of the property, which is the gas station. We've agreed to put the landscaping in all along the border at the same time we put the gas station in, which is a significant and major concession and gives the neighborhood protection by having the landscaping put in very early and also allows it time to grow and provide additional screening. They were concerned about the lighting within the landscape setback. We gave them specific standards. We agreed to certain matters in connection with that. We had adjusted the outdoor lighting and gave them an opportunity to have input into the photometric lighting plan. The bottom line is, we agreed with 90% of everything those stipulations or those neighbors requested, and they're in the stipulations. So they're done, they're detailed, and they're set forth. There are only two differences between us and the neighbors, and both deal with setbacks. They are proposing that we have to have a 50 foot setback to the nearest building. Well, the ordinance only requires 25. We're asking simply to stay with the ordinance, and there are plethora of instances all over the valley, contrary to what Dr. Weigle said, where that 25 foot setback has proven to be effective. And by the way, that 25 foot setback jumps to 50 if we put a two story building there. The other is the landscape setback. The landscape setback isn't designated under your ordinance, but there is a stipulation on this case, and that stipulation requires a 15 foot landscape setback. We're agreeing to provide that. We didn't modify that stipulation. So we're providing what the ordinance requires on setbacks. We're requiring more than what the ordinance requires on landscape setback pursuant to this stipulation. Now, you saw that chart that Dr. Weigle presented to you. I give her a lot of credit for creativity and ingenuity, but the setback that she's talking about has nothing to do with the setback from the building or from the houses to the building. She's taking an ordinance requirement and saying, because the houses are two story, therefore she reasons that if you build a two story building, you have to have a difference at that. That is not what the ordinance says. It just simply doesn't apply. And but the most important thing is that there's a process, and we have to come back in and get site plan approval for every remaining parcel on this property. So they get a full crack at us. This isn't a situation where it's Dr. Weigle, I think inferred, that, oh, we don't get the, here's the site plan, and since they don't have identified users, we don't get input. That's not true. We're required to come back and go through the same site plan hearing for every one of those uses. So the neighbors are fully protected. The bottom line is, this developer has been very good to the neighbors. We've worked with them, had four meetings, agreed to literally 90% of everything they asked for. We've gone the extra mile, and we're here with neighbors that knew this property was zone C2 when they bought their homes. This isn't a late zoning. The C2 was there. They knew it when their homes were bought. In conclusion, we are coming before you with a recommendation of approval of the PHO, the staff, and unanimous planning commission. And we hope that you would concur with those recommending bodies and approve the application as it currently exists with all the eight modifications we've made to the plan at their request. And that concludes my presentation. The mayor would be happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful, thank you. We will go next to Phil Hertel, followed by Robert Branscombe. And let's.
Proceed, Mayor. I could ask my questions after public comment.
Okay, wonderful. And we will go to Phil. So we'll do Phil Hertel now, followed by Robert Branscombe. At the end, we will return to Paul Gilbert, and Councilmember Garcia will have the floor for some questions. Phil, I cannot hear you.
Mayor, it appears that we do not have Phil at this time.
Okay, then we will go to Robert Branscombe.
Again, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmen, Councilwomen. My name is Robert Branscombe, Chairman of the Levine Village Planning Committee, 8908 South 55th Lane, Levine, Arizona. We heard this case as a committee back on July 13th of 2020, and like most of the cases we get now, this case was approved by the city council years ago. 18 years, I see, 18 years has passed, and we are making decisions on zoning and uses of zoning, which sometimes may or may not be applicable now since the times have changed. We did deny this case a six to two vote, and the applicant decided to move forward, which he did, and it was appealed by Dr. Weigle and the community. I was asked later on after it went through the planning commission if I would sit in and moderate between the two parties. We did meet three times, and we did have some good detailed discussion about the stipulations. In the end, we did come to some compromises, and I want to thank Paul Gilbert and his staff and Alan for their contribution. I also want to thank Dr. Weigle and the community for their input. I know it's very hard to sometimes see change, and the community should and deserve to have some input on it. One thing I do want to mention, though, is I know that the community is concerned about the setback, and we understand that 25 feet is zoned and in order with the city as far as one building of commercial. But when you have two story buildings already there and the commercial has not arrived yet, does the two story buildings not have the same right to have the setback? That was the question asked to me, and I would think that the city hopefully might consider that. But after all is said and done, they have come to agreement, as Mr. Gilbert said, probably 99% were there. And if there's any questions for me, I'm here to answer those this evening. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your testimony. We will next go to Alan Boudwin.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Garcia. If it hadn't been obvious by now, I have been tag teaming with Paul Gilbert's office, Alan Boudwin, Norris Design, 901 East Madison. Paul did an excellent job articulating the process we've been through. So all I'll do is slightly supplement what Paul had provided, and that's the site plan that you have before you and what we presented to the Village Planning Committee, the planning commission, and the planning hearing officer started pre-COVID-19 condition. And when we started this process, we had all of the uses that were indicated on that plan very interested in being in this site. As we emerged in this process, we discovered along the way that three of the four uses needed to back off in terms of their commitment to the site, but the corner use, the gas use, is still interested, very interested and very committed. So as the neighborhood talks about perhaps some unpredictability with regards to those uses, we recognize that that emerged through this process, but also understand that we we need to go back to the Village Planning Committee to present any modified plan, which would include any future use that would occupy the other three parcels that are identified on the site plan. We also have invited the representatives from the adjacent community to participate in the City of Phoenix Development Review Process related to any site plan and the details of that site plan that would move forward toward construction. And so we believe that they have a solid voice with regards to their participation and full understanding as to what those future uses might be. Lastly, I'll tell you with regards to these setbacks, the additional setbacks are problematic for this particular property. There's 420 feet of width between 59th Avenue and the property line for these homes. Those additional setbacks would be hugely impactful in terms of the enjoyed use of this property from an efficient perspective. We believe that we can work with the adjacent neighborhood as it relates to future uses moving forward, and we would like the opportunity. And, uh, we would like the opportunity to do that. Uh, we, we, we hope that through all the compromise that was accomplished with the additional stipulations, the recommendation of the planning commission, the planning hearing officer, and the additional stipulations that we've worked out with the neighborhood, you have a solid case here to support. We hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you. We will then, if we could, um, unmute Paul Gilbert again.
Uh, I'm unmuted, but I, am I to speak now or ask, answer a question?
I guess if you had a concluding thought, um...
I do, well, thank you. Uh, just very quickly, because I know we've been here a long time. But the fifty-foot setback is just virtually unheard of. Um, we could put a single-story building there and have to have a fifty-foot setback on a small piece of property. That isn't what the ordinance requires. I submit you'll find very few instances of that taking place. Secondly, I think we've shown a commitment to work with this neighborhood. We have to come back and go through the same process with all the other three sites. I think we have demonstrated that we're in good faith willing to do that. And reiterating that for the record, this won't be the last conversation we have with the neighbors. We'll come back and they'll get a full opportunity to provide any impact, any input and feedback that they want. So that, this isn't the final say. It is on the gas station on the corner, but not for the balance of the site. I also want to point out that, um, the, uh, Robert, uh, did attend all of our meetings. And we appreciated that, Robert. And he gave some good impact and served as sort of a semi-mediated and did a very fine job. But as he said, more than ninety percent, we agreed to. It's only down to two questions. Setback. And we're agreed to abide by the ordinance. And then for the building setback and more than what the ordinance would require with a fifteen-foot landscape setback. So thank you, Mayor. Those are my concluding observations.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to thank everybody for the work they did, both, uh, Paul and, and Dr. Waddell and, and Robert, who I, I myself sat through the planning commission meeting and, and all these folks were there and then sat through a long night like this one. Um, but I do, Paul, I, I do recognize you've done a lot and you're willing to come back to the neighbors. But I wanted to ask you and your client, and I don't know if you can make the decision now. Hopefully, you can. I would, and I know what the ordinance says. And I know it, you're, you're within the ordinance. But I would like to ask you all to consider at least five more feet, uh, to move, uh, within the landscape, uh, from fifteen to twenty feet. Um, is that something that you can do before I move to my motion?
Am I unmuted now? Thank you. Uh, Councilman Garcia, you ask in the right manner. Because you're asking, we'll do it. We'll agree to five more feet of landscape setback.
Thank, thank you so much. So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, wonderful. I will go ahead and close the public hearing and turn to Councilmember Garcia.
I, I'd like to motion to approve item seventy-eight per the memo from the Planning and Development Director dated October seventh, twenty twenty, and adopt a related ordinance, uh, with a modification uh, to new stipulation forty-five to change the landscape with width from fifteen to twenty feet along the east property line. All other language in the stipulation would stay the same. And I would look forward to also joining, um, when and if, uh, the neighbors are brought back in to, to look at future development. So...
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments?
Just a quick, clear... Uh, can you just get a point of clarification? Um, Alan, is it, do, are we adopting an ordinance with this particular case?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, yes, uh, in this case, it would be an ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So yes, I just wanted to congratulate everyone on this case. Congratulate Councilmember Garcia, um, Paul, the neighbors, everyone that worked together on, on this project to be able to make this happen. So thank, thanks so much for all the great work. Um, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Garcia.
Yeah.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We next move to our final agenda item for today, item number seventy-nine, the northwest corner of Thirty-Fifth Avenue and Carver Road. Uh, well, it is again in District Eight. So I will turn to Councilmember Garcia to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor, and apologize for keeping us so late. Um, I want to motion to continue this item from, for six months to the April formal meeting to allow for the property owner to file a zoning case to downzone the property. The applicant must work with community and have all of the required public meeting and hearing steps. But I know that the overall timeline will be reduced. I understand that this has been a long process for both sides. We've sat in probably ten meetings with both sides on, on this. Um, but this part of, of my district is, is really special as you all have seen over the last three items. Um, the attention to detail and focus, uh, uh, compromise on both sides to make a great project that hopefully will work. I want to make sure and be very clear to let the developer know that I'm not supportive of the current case in the configuration. And also, uh, neighbors, um, I, you know, there, there is some property rights here. And the, the property does not, unfortunately, and it's been a theme of, of today, um, this was rezoned in, I think, two thousand and seven. And so we don't start, unfortunately, from where, um, this should have ended up with, with some of the stipulations that are there. But I, I hope that we can come to, uh, an agreement in the next six months. And again, the motion is to continue this item for six months, uh, to the April formal meeting.
And that's the April seventh formal?
Yes.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Uh, we will take public comment now, but not on the merits of the case, just on the continuance. But we have a group of folks who've been working on this for months and who have, uh, stayed through this, uh, long council meeting. So we will, um, go ahead and, and take some public comment, beginning with Sid Manning.
Are you able to hear me okay?
We are.
Excellent, thank you so much. So Mayor Gallego, Councilmember Garcia, other council members. My name is Sid Manning. I live at thirty-two twenty West Seaton Drive. As Councilmember Garcia mentioned, I've been one of the leaders and involved in this case from the very beginning. I'm opposed to the continuance because there are several concerns here. This makes the fourth continuance, three for council and one for planning commission. My concern is, I understand the reason for the applicant's continuance request is to plan for a PUD with no zoning district. This blank check is not acceptable, and it sets a dangerous precedent. If the applicant was truly serious about rezoning, it could have been done by now. They've known since day one that zoning is the issue. It's been the issue for thirteen years. Unfortunately, we're here because the zoning reversion to S-one should have been codified in two thousand and eleven. Unfortunately, virtual partners and their multiple attorneys continue to delay, deflect, and use the threat of legal action to push us and you around despite their having a Proposition Two oh seven waiver on file, which raids their right to sue the city for diminution of value claims based on your actions. The community is compromised to R-one eighteen, and the applicant has refused to move or meet us on zoning. We have worked in good faith for a very long time with the applicant and in close conjunction with Councilmember Garcia. This case should be heard, should be voted on, and it should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll have Brian Pelzer, followed by John Zidell.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, my comments were more focused on the merits of the case and, uh, not around the continuance issue. But, uh, I would just echo, uh, the sentiments by Sid Manning. And, uh, just thank you for your time.
Wonderful, thank you for your time and patience. John will be followed by Evelyn Franklin.
I'd echo the same sentiments that have been brought forward. Um, this case should have been, uh, reverted in its zoning back in two thousand and eleven. The city has a process, and it just needs to follow those processes. And that process would have reverted the zoning back in two thousand and eleven. So I would ask that, uh, there is no additional continuance and that the case be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Evelyn will be followed by Judy Brown.
Hello, this is Evelyn Franklin. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, I'm Evelyn Franklin, thirty-one forty-three West Davion Way, Levine, Arizona, eight five three three nine. And, um, I just want to remind us that you've heard several examples today where your citizens feel as though they have no process for achieving things within the city's regulatory system. This is the exact same thing that the neighborhood is faced with. We have been trying since two thousand and eleven to work with the city within its system to get the city to enforce Stipulation Nineteen, which is a city ordinance G-five-zero-two-zero. These same citizens have been asking the city to revert the zoning to S-one. The ordinance effectively is the preapproval for the city to do that. That's what the landowner sa- signed up to. They gave approval for re- reversion. This re- this reversion, however, has been tirelessly asked for in meetings and letters, attending hearings. But we finally have now reached a strength, a voice where the mayor, thank you very much, and council members are ready to act. Now there is a request for a continuance. Simply, we believe that the neighborhood voice will dim. A process will be used for the PUD that will also, um, be a lack of process available to the neighborhood. Or maybe just that time will allow memories to fade, and we might focus on other matters. The process is broken. If the continuance is granted today, the citizens will have no means to get in front of the city for any kind of voice. You guys are busy with other things. The action to revert will not be heard. This clearly demonstrates a unilateral process or abusive process that doesn't include the city. Please deny the continuance, vote, or act tonight and get the department, the city planning department, to do a reversion. You can do that tonight if you'd like to. They are two separate issues. Thank you to the Councilmember Garcia for all your work. Very appreciated. Thank you, Mary, Mayor Gallego, and other council members. We feel deeply listened to. We need a better process, but we're very willing to talk more about the facts in this case. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, well, Judy will be next, and then we will try Phil Hertel again.
Thank you, Mayor Gallego and council members. This is Judy Brown, thirty-two twenty West Seaton Drive, Levine. I just wanted to, um, echo the sentiments of both Sid and, um, Ms. Franklin. This has been going on too long. I've been in, currently involved with the process since day one. And please, uh, deny the case today. And, um, we need to get back to the reversion process. The owner and the representatives just really want to flip the property, get it done, and, uh, get it out of the way. And it's almost a red hearing because some of the council members that may vote against it today may or may not be in office in the future. Thank you very much.
Uh, we will next go, um... Let's see. Phil, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Oh, this time we can hear you, wonderful.
Oh, great. Well, I don't know what happened the last time. Frustrating to wait for four hours to have it fall apart. But, um, before the clock starts, I, I want to make a comment. And that is when we were at council meetings in the past for cases, there's the display up on the wall that shows the case number, what's been continued, what's been approved, what's been withdrawn, where you're at, what the next, next case is. Now we don't have the ability to see that. And from the public's perspective, it's very difficult to keep up with where you are in all of these cases that come forward. So I would ask that the city look into trying to put that back in the screen somehow so we can keep track of where we're at. Okay. Thank you. Um... For the Levine citizens for Responsible Development. And I've been involved in Levine planning since nineteen eighty-eight. And I'm not going to go into the details of this case. You've heard them over and over and over. Countless hours have been spent by city staff and area residents on this case, thousands of dollars in attorney fees and engineering, all the while knowing the community of Levine opposes this case. It's time to be done with it. Let's stop beating the dead horse. The city needs to take action. Deny the case as filed, approve it as R-one-dash-eighteen, and let's let it move forward. Once it's approved at R-one-dash-eighteen, then the community and the landowner can sit down together, put something together that, and get rid of all of this argument. So please, deny it as filed, approve it as R-one-dash-eighteen, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we will have Irma, followed by Paul Gilbert.
Mayor, it appears that Irma is not on the line.
All right, Paul Gilbert.
Eric, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, I don't want to go into the merits of the case. I don't think that's appropriate. Let me just, though, make one very salient point. My clients bought this property, a co- property a couple of years ago, and it was zoned at that time for ninety-nine units. They're willing to do a substantial reduction in the number of units. And if the neighbors are sincere, and I believe they are, that they want to work to get a site plan we all can live with, then the PUD rezoning is exactly the process that should be followed. I think it was very sagacious of the councilman to suggest the continuance. This will give us a chance to do a PUD to try to address, and I don't know if we can, but we're sure going to roll up our sleeves and try to address these neighbors' concern. We've got six months to do it. Then it will be zoned or not zoned. So I think the continuance is a good thing, and it's a fair thing for all concerned. And obviously, we support the continuance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment on this item. Do we have any council member comments before we vote on the continuance?
May, um, Mayor, very quickly, sorry.
Councilwoman Stark.
Alan, the, uh, reversion case would be treated just like another rezoning case, right? We'd have to, they'd go through an application process that would go to the villages, to the planning commission, and then come back to city council, correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, that is correct.
And that would probably take about six months, right? And that would probably take about six months, right?
Probably with opposition of the property owner, probably take longer than that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, were there any other... Councilman Noakowski.
So Alan, realistically, when do you think this would come back if the property owner protests it and stretches it out?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, what the motion that was put forward by Councilman Garcia is to give them six months to process a zoning case for a PUD to then try and win support for a site plan that works for them and the community at that point. And then vote on that prior to... or probably on the same agenda as this one would come back on April 7. So that way, there would be the ability for hopefully a resolution to this issue under the... with a PUD zoning request that allows them to tailor some development standards to address some of their concerns about the number of lots to make the project economically viable, and also some of the community concerns as it relates to trying to fit into the Levine area a little bit better than a traditional zoning district would.
So this was supposed to be reverted back in what year?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, there was a stipulation placed on the case by Councilman Linger that had their... a five-year time period in which to commence development. And that development never commenced. What happens when that takes place is the case, you know, sits, and when somebody comes in to develop the property, they're required to go out and have a public... and have the public meetings to modify the stipulation. This is what drew them into the community process, was staff made them follow and modify that stipulation. And that's what the discussion is that's happening right now.
So we're talking over 13 years ago, right?
Somewhere in that ballpark, yeah.
Yeah, because I'm going on my 13th year. The other thing is, so is there a process where the community can ask for the... to revert it back to the zoning it was?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, the Planning Commission can initiate applications upon someone else's property, but individuals cannot rezone someone else's property.
So the revert just stays there until somebody owns it and comes to us? It can be 100 years or so?
So, Councilman Noakowski and Mayor, there was a time period when we did have some additional staff prior to the Great Recession where we started a process to go through and clean up some of these old zoning cases that had these time steps on them. But that position was eliminated a number of years ago as part of the budget, and we've never got that position back.
Because I used to represent this area, and I know that a PUD in this area won't work. I know that the residents of Levine won't let that happen, especially the three and the four individuals that spoke today. And waiting another six months is just prolonging it, and it's just going to build up. And it's going to be harder for my colleagues and I to actually make a decision on this. So there's no other route that they can take? To protest this or to revert this in any way?
Mayor, Councilman.
It has to be... It has to be the owner?
Well, Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, in this particular instance, the applicant would have two applications open. One rezoning request, and the other one, the stipulation modification. So that would be proceeding through the process to have that discussion, you know, with the community. And the council can decide as those come forward if they wish to deny the PUD rezoning request or, you know, approve that with some site plan configurations or some, you know, adjustments made to that that might have some community support.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our city clerk, we can just do a voice vote on this motion, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. All those in favor of Councilmember Garcia's motion to continue to April 7, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
No.
All right. With two opposed, the motion to continue passes. That is our final agendas item. We now turn to the citizen comment portion of our agenda. I will turn to our city attorney to introduce this portion.
Mayor, members of the council, during citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits councilmembers from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
All right. We will begin our public comment with Kaylee Dotson, followed by Marcus Reed, followed by John Westerdale.
Hello, fellow Phoenicians and city councilmembers. My name is Kaylee Dotson. I'm a mom and a student and a resident of District 4. I have come before the council today to alert the city of Phoenix about a widespread health concern. Before I begin, I would like to express my gratitude to City Council and the city of Phoenix for making this form available, and offer a moment of silence for our brothers and sisters around the world who have been affected by COVID-19. Diamonds got us started, but California real estate is where the real money is. Most of the big millionaires in America made their money in real estate. I take my clue from that. This is a quote taken from an LA Times article from 1994. "When this all started, I could not figure out how all these issues had gone unnoticed by the city and the state. And then it occurred to me that each city and state affected may just need someone to connect the dots and help expose the source of the problem." Pro-residential management, a property management company, uses deceptive practices to lure unsuspecting potential residents into lease contracts and uses evictions as a judicial fix-all to rid their complexes of unruly tenants instead of addressing hundreds, if not thousands, of requests to rid their complexes of pests and to attend to routine and emergency maintenance requests. They do this so they can flip as many units as possible to collect as much money as possible with a blatant disregard for the health and safety of their tenants, most of whom are poor, disabled minorities and families. After searching and reading through hundreds of Google reviews, I have found that the only thing consistent with this company is negligence. Rude negligent staff, retaliation through evictions, mold, bedbugs, roaches, rats, caved-in roofs, taking holding deposits from multiple tenants, prospective tenants, for a single unit, broken AC units, dead bodies, violence, shootings. All of these things are examples of real tenant nightmares that can be found on Google.com. Pratik Jogani has over 30 properties in the state of Arizona. 65% of the complaints that I found on Google were from District 5 and District 4. 17% of complaints were found out of District or in Tucson or other areas in Arizona. There is an insurance fraud incident in Oklahoma. Pratik Jogani was ordered to pay $1 million by the state of Oklahoma because he pocketed $500 million from an insurance fraud claim from a fire from one of his properties. Jogani and his properties are using the Arizona judicial system and clever clauses to their advantage. I apologize. May I please have a few more moments? I'm almost finished.
You can have one sentence, and then we will move on to Marcus.
Okay. I appreciate that. I am asking that the city council provide oversight for myself and other tenants that are stuck living in these units. I've had bedbugs since July, and the units have been repainted in the month after. I... Excuse me, I submitted this to the manager. They're trying to rent to other tenants right now. Apartments.com has the new pictures up, and they are trying to rent to people knowing full well that there's a full-blown...
Marcus will be followed by John Westerdale.
Hello there. So like I've said, I am here because there are sociopaths and psychopaths as police officers that are being left unchecked on our streets, and they continue to cause unrestrained harm on our community. Just like the lawsuit that you guys approved for Brett and Chris Lingan Filter earlier, there's at least 390 police officers of our force that are on the Brady List. And they all think that the streets are their real-life Nintendo games. But we got to remember that we don't respond, respond at all. I'm here because the Phoenix police are likely delegating us taxpayers more lawsuit payouts like the one that you guys approved earlier by targeting people demonstrating their First Amendment rights. To have a truck capable of seeing five miles down the road, the street for protests is telling of how brutal the Phoenix police become when criticized. This isn't hyperbole either. The Phoenix police targeted Erica Werinolds when she brought to light her unwarranted sexual assault. The bad apples, as you would call them, on her case. And many on the Brady List still work for the department. We bleed money on the front end for this department, and we bleed money on the back end for this department. Oswald Grenier, one of the officers who killed Mohammed Mahieman, walked out the back door with a $4,000 a month pension. National newsmaker Christopher Meyer, another $5,000. Michael Lynn, $4,000. These were three that got their pensions on October 6 the other day. On top of all of these lawsuits, it's time for you all to reckon with the havoc your department... your Phoenix Police Department is causing in this city. So I guess you did approve it, so... But you approved one for $1.2 million, $75,000, another $75,000, another $25,000. And I guess you guys are just considering that a bargain for the Phoenix Police's open season on hunting all of us humans. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
John will be followed by Jessica Spencer.
Yes, Mayor, councilmembers. I am a property owner in the Capitol Mall District. I am disappointed that the Planning Department chose to recommend expanding the Human Services Campus in their staff report presented this week to the Central City Village Planning Committee. This expansion would more than double the shelter beds at the campus in an area already overwhelmed by the homelessness crisis. The staff report is about 300 pages long. With over 200 pages of the document, dedic... the two... Over 200 pages of documents and letters are against the expansion. This includes the letters of opposition from Senator Rebecca Rios, Representatives Diego Rodriguez and Reginald Boulding, Councilmember Noakowski, and many neighborhood leaders. Neighbors described, line by line, how the zoning stipulations are ineffective and will not improve the area. Councilmember Noakowski and others described how the homelessness crisis is being dumped on a low-income minority neighborhood. The shelter is only 1,200 feet away from the Dunbar Elementary School, a historic African-American school. Neighbors described how other thousand-bed shelters have been closed in favor of smaller shelters that are more humane for the homeless. This would be one of the largest shelters in the nation. There are letters from residents who have been victims of violent crimes. And this past Monday, someone was shot to death at the Tent and Camin on Jackson and 9th Avenue. Neighbors have provided clear evidence that this expansion is terrible for the neighborhood, but they're being ignored. City and county leadership must step up and work together to address the homelessness crisis. But expanding the Human Services Campus is not a good solution. Thank you for your time.
Miriam will be followed... I'm sorry, let's see. Jessica Spencer will be followed by Miriam Mariah.
Yes, hello. I'm Jessica Spencer. Thank you for having me. I was at this protest this past Saturday. And on the way home, when the protest was over, it was very peaceful. And on the way home, we were stalked by the police. We literally had cars following us down the street. And afterwards, Lee Percy Christian, known as Percy, was singled out and hunted by Phoenix police as he was going home after this protest. She's being held without bond and has been charged with multiple manufactured felonies. The Phoenix PD is surveilling us. They're targeting the activists, and particularly black activists that are standing up against police violence. Phoenix PD is trying to chill and suppress our free speech and intimidate us. And it almost worked. I was pretty scared. We literally had these cars trolling after us. It's violent, and now it's the standard operating procedure for Phoenix PD. This department must be held accountable. We should immediately drop the charges against Percy. You have put his livelihood and family at risk based on these false charges. You need to immediately end the political prosecution of community members who are standing up to police violence. I mean, you should discipline and fire rogue officers who hunt and target protesters, specifically starting with Lieutenant Ben Moore. This is violent, and there is no reason for it. And they're just using their power to intimidate. I yield the rest of my time.
Miriam will be followed by Elizabeth Carpenter.
Hi. I'm Miriam. I am a PhD student at ASU. I am a teaching assistant, and I'm also a policy minister for Black Lives Matter, Phoenix Metro. And as a teaching assistant, I teach my students that they should stand up for their rights because this country was founded on protest. Unfortunately, when I was at an event, a peaceful protest yesterday, on Saturday, that is not what... The events that occurred were not in alignment with what this country stands for. Again, so what we saw was protesters who were leaving their cars. And we saw with our own eyes, as the other caller stated, Phoenix Police Department hunting down peaceful protesters who were trying to go home and leave the protest into their car. I am very disappointed in this city council meeting that is not addressing the fact that you have a police force. And this is not the 1960s. This is not the 1970s, who is targeting black activists and charging them with felonies. Young black people with felonies for protesting, for exercising their right to protest. I'm absolutely disgusted that this is going on in this city. As we know now, currently, Percy is still incarcerated on false trumped-up charges that folks are allowing... the Maricopa County prosecutor to get away with them charging them with multiple and multiple felonies and trying to ruin their lives for peacefully protesting. So this whole entire process has been happening all summer, and it absolutely needs to change. We have a right to protest. Black lives do matter, and we deserve to say that. If we feel like the police system doesn't work, we deserve to say that, and we deserve to not be hit with felonies, slammed on the ground, and punched because of we're saying that. So I would encourage Phoenix City Council to get on the phone and call their police chief and let their police chief know that they need to stop having their rogue slave patrolers coming after our people because we're... It's absolutely unacceptable. And I'm very disappointed. And then this is why we need the independent and investigative civilian review board. And we need a community-oriented process when writing the policy. And we've been asking y'all for a community-oriented process, and we haven't gotten it. We haven't gotten it. And we haven't gotten independent investigations. We need a whole separate entity to hold them accountable because they're out here going rogue, attacking black people and slamming them on the crowd for trying to go home. This doesn't make any sense. This is a Twilight Zone. Do better.
Elizabeth will be followed by Hannah Hayman.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I am speaking today with the man released, Lee Percy Christian. Percy was singled out, hunted, and unlawfully arrested by Phoenix PD as he was going home after a peaceful protest on October 3. He is now being held without bond and has been charged with several fabricated felonies. Percy is not violent. He is not dangerous, and he is not a threat. He is a loved community member and should not be locked up simply for being a black man standing up against injustice. The Phoenix PD has continuously surveilled... targeted, harassed, and stalked activists, especially black activists who are standing up against police brutality. Phoenix PD is trying to suppress free speech and intimidate protesters. This is political prosecution. This is violent. This is unconstitutional. And this is now the standard operating practice amongst Phoenix PD. So this department must be held accountable, and this city must be held accountable. We demand that all charges against Percy immediately be dropped as these false charges have put his livelihood and his family at risk. We also demand an immediate end to the political prosecution of all community members who are standing up to police brutality. Last, but not least, we demand that the officers who hunt and target protesters immediately be fired starting with Lieutenant Ben Moore. If the city council chooses not to do everything in their power to meet these demands, they will be proven that they are just as racist and fascist as the Phoenix Police Department. And the community will ensure that their names are remembered as being on the wrong side of history and basic human rights. I hope that you choose the right side. That's all. Thank you.
Hannah will be followed by Sushil.
The anti-black, white supremacist city of Phoenix is targeting black activists for protesting their brutality. All charges against Percy must be immediately dropped. His livelihood and his family are at risk because the racist Phoenix police have targeted him with false charges. Immediately end the political prosecution of community members who are standing up to the violence of the white supremacist Phoenix police. Discipline and fire police officers who target protesters, including Lieutenant Ben Moore and chokehold Jerry Williams, who oversees the most violent force in the nation. The fact that you sit here in your little meetings and try to pretend everything is normal is a disgrace. Every single person out in the streets is a better leader than any of you. You need to free Percy now. And as soon as you free Percy, defund the police. Cut their budget by at least 15%, and you'll have enough money to really help the poor folks in this city and expand services, including expanding shelter beds. The amount of money that you pour into the cops so that they can attack the real community leaders like Percy is atrocious. And you'll sure have a lot of passion for talking to rich landowners and tech companies about billboards while our people suffer political persecution in jail. Of course, you all have no time to listen to the community. It's no surprise. You've shown us time and time again that you're incapable of leadership. You all need to shut up and listen. And the white supremacist fool, Sal DeCiccio, who can't even work a phone, needs to walk out into the desert at noon. None of you understand
inappropriate language.
But Sal has said many more inappropriate things, and you know that for a fact. None of you understand what it's like to live in this city. You sit here fawning over these developers who throw pocket change into housing, and you say that's some good thing while more and more homeless people flood into the streets every day. Unnecessarily, the city has the power to put every person into a home tonight if you chose to. But you sit here talking to these developers, you know, going through all of your fancy processes so that you can go home and pat yourselves on the back at night. You're so out of touch. If you had, you know, any dignity, you would sit down, you would listen to what the community is telling you, and you would resign your positions and make way for true leadership in this city.
We will next go to Sushil, followed by Jisoo Kim. And I want to remind everyone, no personal attacks.
Mayor, it appears that we are not able to hear Sushil.
All right. We will then next go to Jisoo, followed by Anisia.
Hello. Thanks for your time tonight. I'd like to echo the concerns of community members in support of freeing Percy. Miriam and Hannah have said it best, so I won't repeat all that too much, but I'd like to emphasize how, again, Percy is being held without bail in a totally unnecessary situation. COVID is still going on. We know that jails are a hotspot for COVID as we speak. And, you know, the community has tried to get in contact with the Maricopa County Attorney's Office, and they will not speak to us. And so here we are today, making our voices heard. And you may think that these offices, these institutions are separate, but A, you, as individuals, all vote for this attorney, though, of course, John Westerdale is not elected. And as for the police force, this is your police force. And they, you know, they claim that they serve and that they're your bosses. And so in that way, we demand that you put an end to all this violence. You are continuing this problem, and that's why we keep coming out and making our voices heard. So with that, thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Anisia is next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I will try to reiterate what some recent callers have said without being too repetitive. Phoenix PD is surveilling, harassing, hunting down, and caging activists protesting police brutality. And there is no hyperbole in that, as others have said. I'll repeat the demands. Immediately drop all charges against Lee Percy Christian. Immediately end the political prosecution of community members standing up to police violence. And discipline and fire rogue officers who hunt down protesters, starting with Lieutenant Ben Moore. And I'd like to add that this is where we're at. You need to understand, this is where we are. There's nothing Phoenix PD won't do to preserve this racist violence system. Time is up. They have to be stopped now. And I will also add that I was there. I guarantee you that everyone present experienced serious trauma. Obviously, those who were brutalized did. But even anyone who witnessed what happened now has to go seek counseling. Get it together and end this now. Thank you.
Thank you. For our staff, do we have any additional registered public comments remaining online?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right, then, with that, today's council meeting is complete. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.